And sorry for the bit of a delay. Well, only about a minute, so it's all good. So if I can ask Lisa, the clerk is out sick, so Lisa is, Lisa or Sarah?
I'm gonna, Sarah's gonna work on minutes and I'm gonna work on voting and.
Okay, very good. So if I can ask you to take the roll call.
Sure. Trustee Bachner?
Here.
Trustee Cargie? Trustee Cargie?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Vasquez? I'll circle back to him in just a second. Trustee Brennan?
Here.
Trustee Henick?
Here.
Trustee O'Connell?
Here.
President Aducy?
Here.
And trustee Vasquez?
No, he had power issues, I think.
Okay.
He did, okay.
So we'll check in on him later.
Is he on a phone, maybe?
I'm checking.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, we'll then, let's do the pledge.
There he is.
There's Russ.
Trustee Vasquez.
Russ, you gotta say here.
Oh, sorry. Here, here.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, if you can ask Stan and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have some citizens comments that we'll get to. I have, so we'll just do them all right now. Deb Wolstein, Deb, are you on the line? Just unmute, star six.
Hi, yep, I'm here.
Okay, hello.
Um, hi. I'm Deb Wolstein, I live at 1130 Inklund, and I just wanted to express my support for the Twin City Covenant. I hope that all the board members will vote in favor of it, and that if it's passed, its enactment will be robust and meaningful, and not just window dressing. And I really think partnering with Maywood is an exciting prospect. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Christian Kuhn? Christian? Star six to unmute.
I unmuted myself.
Okay.
Hi, everyone, I'm Christian Kuhn, I'm the pastor of River Forest Native Methodist Church and also Urban Villages Church, which just started a new location in River Forest. I was fortunate to walk in the Black Lives Matter march, we did yesterday with other River Forest leaders, and was heartened to hear also about the Twin City Covenant. As a pastor, of course, I draw upon the scriptures when I sense God's movement in certain times and places, and it's reminded me, these times have reminded me of the book of Esther. When Esther is being encouraged and challenged to speak up, when so many of her Jewish brothers and sisters are being persecuted, Esther 4:14 says, "For if you keep silence at such a time as this, relief and deliverance will rise for the Jews from another quarter, but you and your father's family will perish. Who knows, perhaps you have come to royal dignity for such a time as this." And I believe we are in such a time as this, which is why I'm hopeful for the potential of this. And even though I've been pastoring in River Forest for a year, it seems like this is a time that's pregnant with hope and possibility. And so I urge the trustees to affirm this covenant and to appoint a commission to make sure that the covenant moves forward with real action. And so I would certainly, however I can offer my time and efforts to this, I would be happy to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, Christian. Megan? I think I saw you.
Thank you, I'm here, yes.
Yep, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Megan Cuscatello, I live at 8125 Lake Street in River Forest, which is quite near our Maywood neighbors, right on the western edge. And tonight I also urge you to support the Twin Village Covenant brought to us by our Maywood neighbors. I think it's a wonderful start to a more collaborative relationship with Maywood. And as we get started, I think we need to be deliberate and thoughtful in our efforts to engage, so that they bear more than just economic fruit. Our collaboration needs to do more than just meet the needs of our residents. We need to work to repair the damage that hundreds of years of institutional racism have brought. It's a tall order, but one that begins with neighbor meeting neighbor and communities reaching out instead of away from each other. And I commend you all for taking this step, and I ask you to take another step as well. Establish a joint board or commission to oversee these issues, and collaboratively find the best ways for our two villages to come together for the benefit of all. A board or commission would take this document from being aspirational to something tangible and real. One that's jointly staffed would offer transparency and a hope of a true sense of neighborliness. Good or bad neighbors, we are neighbors, and it's time we got to know one another better. Time we reached across first avenue and acknowledged all that has created our relationship to date and all that we can do to make it better. So thank you all, and I urge your support for this covenant.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, Dan, you are up, you're on 4A, 4B, 9A, and 9C, and I understand you want to share a screen. I remind you, five minutes.
I'm not gonna have to share a screen, I'll take care of them all at once.
Okey dokey.
First, I would urge the board to, once you start meeting in person, to continue to meet, allow people to join the meetings by Zoom. The board, the plan commission, all village elements, it certainly enhances citizen participation, contributes transparency, and doesn't put older people in the position of having to go to a crowded village board meeting where they are indeed putting themselves at risk. I think it would really constitute discrimination against older people and people with underlying conditions to discontinue this practice. So I hope when you discuss in the last item about the next board meetings, you will either adopt a resolution or just plain decide to continue to use Zoom to allow people to participate. Second, I think the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan that's before you illustrates my concern about rushing into things and adopting things. Item three in it calls for amending the zoning ordinance and possibly other village regulations specifically accommodate integrated supportive housing. I think the fact that that is there illustrates that the plan commission, probably most of the village board, and supportive staff don't know what supportive integrated housing is. It's not, doesn't require, I can tell you right now categorically, there are no amendments needed to any code in River Forest to establish supportive, integrated, uh, integrated supportive housing, none whatsoever. It's simply someone or up to five people living in a dwelling unit that get supportive services. And there's no codes that need changes. So I would hope that you will not rush through adopting the plan tonight. I think it needs to be going through with a fine-tooth comb to correct these deficiencies and errors in the plan, implementation plan, because again, there's nothing to amend. Phil Carmody brought it up simply because of the need, in order to do this kind of housing, you need affordable housing to make it financially viable, and that was his concern, not between Knox's concern. I spoke with him this afternoon about it. He was a little puzzled why this was in the plan like this. And that brings up my concern about the Maywood resolution and the law enforcement and community resolution. They've existed, been out for four days. I know they're gonna pass tonight. I know you're gonna seize the opportunity and seize the moment to pass them. But I think that it is an ill-advised policy and not good government to act on matters like this in such haste. It is important to give the community an opportunity to vet these and to find out what they actually mean. To be perfectly honest, one of the most important things River Forest could do is actively recruit people from Maywood to work for the village and encourage our businesses to hire Maywood residents. There's other things that could be done as well. I, the thing that I would really hope you do not intend to do is use this covenant to restrict or limit the areas of cooperation that the two communities could do. I think it's very important to distribute it as something that is a starting point, but not a restriction. So whatever you do with this, whether it be set up a commission to implement, do joint meetings, which may would be wise, use it as a starting point. Similarly, the police resolution, you need data. And it would be very helpful to have data in time for those meetings with the police in the next two weeks, three weeks, on the racial composition, gender composition, ethnic composition of the police, as well as the data. And I would urge you to hold off on the police resolution until after those two meetings, so the public will be better informed about our law enforcement efforts here. And there might be some tweaks you might want to make to that resolution to customize it for River Forest based on those meetings. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak to you.
Okay, thank you, Dan, very much appreciate it. Okay, Diana?
Hi there.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you? I wanna talk about the resolution affirming the Village of River Forest's principles regarding the relationship between the community and law enforcement. I think this resolution is premature, and I think it constrains and predisposes a direction that the community's had no input about. So, plus, on Wednesday, we're gonna have a meeting on policing and social justice, so it doesn't make any sense to me to pass this tonight. I think we need two things. First, the discussion with the community, the word's right there in the resolution, especially black folks and other people of color. And second of all, we need to look at data. For example, on traffic stops, there is the Open Data Policing Report that looks at every police department in Illinois on their traffic stops. So here in River Forest, a few years back, there were 6.7% of residents were black, and a whopping 41% of traffic stops are to black folks. So I don't think it's just the 6.7% black folks in Oak Park and River Forest that are driving back and forth. I think there's people coming through, and I think we should know about what's going on to get 41% of traffic stops to black folks. And I think that's another reason to reach out to black and brown folks in Maywood and Oak Park, if that's where the data leads us. And perhaps we should then talk about a commission to oversee the police and to look at how much money is budgeted to police and pensions versus social services. So let's start by talking to the community, not handpick community members, but to black and brown folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Bob, could the resident identify herself and who she is and where she lives, please?
Who, Diana?
Yeah, Diana, sorry. Diana Lauber, 72, 15 Oak.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, Diana, I should have said your last name, so, my apologies. Okay, very good, thank you. And we've got one last one, Margie Sekander, are you on, this is Drainage, I assume, on Keystone?
Hi, no, it's Margie Sekander, 531 River Oaks Drive.
Oh, River Oaks, okay.
And I'm here to share my concern about drainage. The project specifically at 515 Auverne, which is the William Winslow House, and the permit application to move groundwater from the yard that's 2/3 of an acre to a drain pit in the front yard that can overflow into the sewer and into the street and adjoining properties. The owner stated to me, the downspouts and yard drains in his project will tie into pipes running to a drain pit located 10 or 20 feet and up slope from the Auverne East Side Sewer Drain, the pit directly across from my property. In heavy rain, the overflow from the pit will flow down to the sewer, potentially filling the sewer and overflowing onto Auverne. May 17th, about 7:00 PM, the Auverne East Side Sewer overflowed into the street. The Lake Street Sewer at River Oaks also filled and overflowed onto Lake Street. One or more houses in our little neighborhood of 17 residences on Auverne and River Oaks had sewer backup. And the sewer backup has also occurred previously, 2013, 2008, 1987, among some of the other dates. Our concern is the potential for sewer backup and flooding exacerbated by groundwater diverted to the sewer, potentially during a high water table or river flooding event like we had in 2013, 2008, 1987. MWRD and the village direct residents to direct groundwater away from entering the combined sewers. If the permit that's being applied for is approved, any owner could install a drain pit, however small, near a sewer drain or street, divert groundwater from their yard to the pit to overflow into the sewer. I think our village is in need of some additional drainage codes, specifically a minimum capacity for stormwater holding, a minimum distance from the sewer and the street, and flow rates for passive drainage systems, some clearly defined allowable passive drainage methods, again, clearly defined, like drain pits, dry wells, French drains, bio swales, rock beds, et cetera, and to strongly encourage alternative passive drainage, like permeable pavers that we have been, but also compacted crush rock and other alternatives. I filed a FOIA request for details on the project, the application, and I have spoken to the village engineer. I asked the village to carefully consider the 515 Auverne drainage application for its impact to the neighbors and implications for what owners could do in the future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Margie. I'm gonna make sure that that doesn't get lost in terms of, you know, her concerns, since this is not on the agenda for discussion.
Yes.
So, who's gonna take that? Okay, so Jeff, you're on the line.
Well, I don't know if he's on the line tonight, but he's, we're aware of the situation. We issued a stop work order at the property, so the village is aware of it and we're in the process of reviewing those plans.
Okay, and you'll circle back.
I bring it up now because your meeting is not until July 13th, and it may be too late at that point.
No, that's, oh, that's fine, no, 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 no issue raising it, I'm just saying, we're aware of it, we're in review with our engineers right now, looking at what they're proposing.
Is that, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll continue to follow up with Jeff Loester, thank you so much.
Yes, you're welcome.
I want the whole board to be aware of the issue because it has longer-term implications.
Agreed, and thank you for bringing it to our attention.
You're welcome.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that concludes the comment, the speakers that are here this evening. I've got one email from one resident, Jessica Iverson, came in today, so I will read this into the, I haven't read it, so bear with me, into the record, since it's only one. It says, "I'm submitting the below as a public comment for the upcoming village board trustees meeting. I support the resolution affirming the Village of River Forest's principles regarding the relationship between the community and law enforcement. However, I would like to see the village go further to investigate how policy funding may be redeployed to fund initiatives in areas of education, healthcare, especially health, mental health, fair housing, and youth services. I fully support the proposal to identify and adopt real and lasting measure that benefit the Maywood community and improve racial equity in River Forest. We have an opportunity here in our local communities to commit to solving the problems that result from the longstanding institutionalized racial injustice and oppression in this country. I urge the village board of trustees to establish a joint commission to work on, among other initiatives, the development of a regional plan for purposes of commercial and residential investment, to recognition of holidays such as Juneteenth and Cinco de Mayo, and partnerships and collaboration on equipment, facilities, and services. This effort should be undertaken with the intent to listen, reflect, and follow the lead of black leaders in Maywood and beyond. Thank you for your opportunity to share my feedback, Jessica Iverson." Okay, I will give you that back. Okay, so that concludes the citizen comments, and now we're going on to item four, which is the elected officials' comments and announcements. And I'll go ahead and start with trustee O'Connell.
Thanks, Kathy. I don't, I really have a lot tonight, I just wanted to, kind of, I was reflecting back on the last couple of weeks, and I was thinking about just kind of our meetings, the interaction of our community, and what I came away with after our last meeting was, democratic process works, and we were, we were proof of that on our, at our board meeting two weeks ago. You know, we listened, we contemplated, we discussed, and we made some decisions so we could govern and move forward. And that's what makes this job worth doing, you know, and I know we were here till after midnight, but you know, the next morning I woke up refreshed and ready to go, and knowing that we'd gotten something done for our community. So I want to congratulate everyone on the board and our residents for their engagement and conversation on all of the topics that we discussed, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Okay, Patty? No, I'm sorry, the other, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because this one, okay, I forget where we're at.
Going this direction, Bob, yeah, thank you. Just want to say hello and welcome to everybody who's listening. I hope all the fathers on the call enjoyed their day, and everyone else enjoyed celebrating the fathers and their lives, if you're not a father yourself. I too have done a lot of reflecting over these last couple weeks on a range of issues. Probably the biggest being taking the time, like a lot of people, I think, have been doing, reflecting on our world at large, really, our country at large, where we are in terms of reacting to the killing of George Floyd and way too many others, the impact to black and brown communities that the pandemic has had and shined a light on in terms of issues there closer to home, as has been mentioned previously, is the incident we had here at the Jewel, which has prompted this resolution that we will be discussing in our meeting tonight. And really makes me think about so much at all different levels, but particularly for our community, it makes me reflect and think about the things we're doing right and affirming the things that we're doing right, and that was highlighted very much so by the actions of many residents who took the time to show up and participate in the walks. These past weeks, we had the walk on Sunday, I believe the date was the 13th. We were invited to participate in a Black Lives Matter march, starting in Bellwood and proceeding to Forest Park. And the incredible turnout of River Forest residents to show support to everybody marching, and most importantly, to the black and brown community, was incredible. It really was such a moving experience for me. I know it was an extremely moving experience to a lot of Bellwood, Maywood residents, most particularly the woman next to me, who, when we got over the bridge and saw all the welcome signs, was literally beside herself sobbing in tears. She had been doing a live feed on her phone for this march, and when we got over to the point where she's seeing all these signs, she literally could not talk, and I could not believe how this impacted her. And I've since had follow-up conversations with people who shared that they had that same reaction getting to River Forest. And so part of me is really proud of our residents who came out to show that support, but part of me is actually really sad at the thought of there are folks, our neighbors, who have had this feeling, who did not expect this kind of welcome coming in our community. And so, as I said, it's made me think about the things that we're doing right, which is great, but it also affirms and tells me that there are a lot of things that I think we could be doing better. I think a lot of people are recognizing in this current climate that thoughts we had going down a particular path in planning and voting on various policies and looking at things that we're doing, we are now at a point in time, a climate in this moment, where we have to look at things through a different lens. And so I think, for me, this is how the last couple weeks, and even looking at things that are on our agenda today, this is how I'm looking at some of these items, and I'm gonna expand on that as we go through our agenda. I'm gonna expand thoughts on that. But I do, again, want to thank all the residents who came out and to show their support. I already feel, you know, with all of these things, when you have bad things happen, I think a lot of people, the inclination is to try and find the silver lining, find what good could come out of this. And so for me, it's the silver lining that we do in fact have people in our community that want to do the right thing and work towards welcoming our neighbors and really making impactful changes to prove that. And it shows me that already for me, that because of these events, these marches, and the conversation around this resolution, I have already started relationships and friendships with people that I hope will continue and look forward to continuing. And so already, I feel like we have some wins, but I think we have a long ways to go. But I'm excited at the prospect of what we are gonna be able to do moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Katie?
Hi, my daughter and I also participated in the Juneteenth event last Friday, and I wanted to thank our neighboring communities for inviting us, and it was impressive, impactful, in a beautiful and painful way. I learned a lot, and I will be continuing to listen and learn as we go forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Katie. Russ?
Thank you. As with trustee Henick, I also want to have a belated Father's Birthday, I'm sorry, Father's Day celebration yesterday, and I hope all the fathers in our village particularly had a great day off, and relaxing, enjoying with the family. In addition, though, I'm not gonna repeat what trustee Henick said, but there was also, regarding the Black Lives Matter March on June the 14th, a few of us went there. Besides, in addition to Patty Henick, we had our village president Aducy, we also have trustee Bachner, also our village clerk Kathleen White, and I also attended, and I would echo trustee Henick's observations and thoughts. And so I was glad to have joined as part of that as well. The other item that I'd like to just recall, I know the notice went out to everybody in the village, but also to remind everybody, we do have the River Forest Police Department forums coming up on June the 24th and July the 8th at 6:00 PM. Of course, people are welcome to come to both, they're welcome to go present one or the other. I think the format and the agenda items are gonna be the same, but of course, there's always some additional questions or discussion that may be more relevant or raised in one versus the other. So if people want to come to both, I welcome all to come to both, which is great. So I will be there as well. All right, take care.
Thank you. Okay. Erica? No, Tom, I'm sorry, skip to via, excuse me, Tom, please.
The year committee, I think tomorrow, will approve the final version of the survey, or questionnaire, sorry. We will be sending a postcard to the community, every address we have in the community. The survey will be, oh, the questionnaire will be answerable by any person over 18 that resides in the village. As I said last time, it'll cost about $2,000 for the mailing. I think that's it. So ideally, the plan right now, or at least what I assume the plan will be, is to run the survey until August, give people an opportunity until August, and then compile the information. We have a hard stop deadline on September 30th, so we need to make a recommendation by then. That's pretty much it, I'll update you, assuming we need to pass, I'll update you on the next steps at our next meeting.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Now Erica.
Sorry, I was on mute.
Yep.
I'd like to start with a land acknowledgement. So as we begin, we are mindful that we hold these meetings on land that was once and still inhabited by indigenous people, including the Opa'awah, the Chip'awah, Menominee, Hauda'wahami nations, and more. And we remember, we will remember our nation's history and honor the native people as stewards of this land that was colonized, and that River Forest continues to be a place many people from diverse backgrounds live and gather. I also just want to- Um, I, uh, also just want to, um, thank you, uh, give a big thank you to the village of Bellwood and trustee Isaiah Brandon, who, um, put together the Black Lives Matter march on, uh, June 14th and to, um, Senator Kim Lightford, who put together the, uh, Juneteenth Celebration and Justice and Police Accountability March on the 19th. Um, I was able to have my kid join the Black Lives Matter march as well. And, um, as someone who has participated in these, um, types of, um, marches in the, um, city of Chicago, uh, I was, um, gratified to see something like this in my own backyard. And, um, I think one of the most important things that we can remember too is as people and I don't know if I've said this before, but as people share their stories, as they did, um, at both of these marches, they are resharing their own trauma and trauma of their, um, family members and ancestors. And, um, for many of us, we don't have an opportunity always to hear those stories. And so whenever people are brave enough to share those stories and their thoughts, um, uh, we, we need to, we need to listen to that and acknowledge it and, um, use that to be better in the way that we do our work and the way we are in our everyday lives. So I just appreciate all of the speakers who came out to share their stories on both those days. Um, and to that end as well, I was, um, uh, Miguel Jones, who is a trustee with, um, Maywood reached out to me and, um, uh, President Ducey and I think the other trustees as well, um, because he had a resident, um, who came up to him and talked about how, um, they didn't feel safe in our community. And, um, the incident that happened at Jewel was just, um, one more, um, affirmation of that. And, um, you know, it is his leadership that, uh, we have this covenant on our agenda tonight. And, um, I will, I, I am so, um, happy to take his lead. I told him that I was upset that I didn't come up with something like this myself. Um, but it is the beginning of something, um, I think that will be truly extraordinary and will allow us to, um, build bridges and, um, see each other as one entire community. Um, so I am so thankful to him for that and, um, for the other trustees who were able to, uh, and other elected officials who were able to talk with him. To that end, um, trustee Brennan and I did speak further, um, in the past couple of weeks about what an equity, uh, working group for River Forest would look like and could do. And, um, the items in the covenant are, um, just a couple of things that we can begin to touch on and make some real big impact with, I think, with a group of people who would be looking at these issues. Um, as trustee Brennan mentioned, um, before, the issue of policing is one that is, um, highly significant when it comes to equity. And I think, um, a group of people would be looking at that as well. And, uh, thank you to Dan Lobber and the other residents who spoke tonight. Those, those are things that we should be considering as well. And so, um, it is a bit of a process, but I think we have a first step with the covenant and with the plan to come up with a working group. And, uh, next steps around that would be to, um, begin to build relationships with stakeholders and, um, speak to the black and brown community, speak to other organizations about what their interest is, um, speak to people in our own community, um, who would be helpful around this and begin to identify members of a working group. And there's still, uh, a lot to be determined on how that looks, but, um, I, I think we've got a good start. And if tonight, this, these were the only things that we did, I would be upset by that, right? But I think that there's a lot of work that we are all committed to doing past, um, the votes tonight. Uh, I also want to talk about, um, just today and, um, John Pape informed me of this. Um, we, it looks like the governor has established that we are potentially going into phase four of COVID-19, um, uh, stay at home order, whatever you call it, phase four for the state of Illinois. And so, um, while that means that things are opening up, it does not mean that COVID is not out there. And so people who, there, there are still high risk, you know, people who are, uh, older, um, people who are immune deficient, um, still need to be very much on the lookout as do we all. So I just wanted to make that point. And, um, around the census, uh, we are coming up with ways to, um, use the rest of the funding that we've been granted and, uh, get our numbers past 80%. So I think we've done really well, uh, around the, um, the self-report, but we want to be able to do others. So, um, still coming up with new ideas to, about how to do that. So, John, I don't know if there was anything else that you wanted to mention in relation to the census?
Uh, I just quickly, I can mention that, yeah, like, like Eric had noted, we're at 80.6, so we're certainly glad to have made it past our 2010 mark on the self-response rate, um, by a percentage point, but there's still a long way to go to getting people comment. Um, we do expect for, um, follow-up enumeration, which would be involving door-to-door to start commencing in late August. Um, but obviously there's still plenty of time between now and then where, um, you know, we're going to try to lean on the volunteers involved with our complete count committee and some of the grant funding left over from Cook County's, uh, census committee to try to bring it home.
Kathy, excuse me, this is Patty again.
Yep.
Erica, are you finished? Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. And Kathy, if I may, um, before you start, um, I forgot that there was a point that I wanted to raise, um, regarding public comments. Is that fine to bring that up now?
Sure.
Um, it, it, um, seemed clear after our last couple of meetings that, um, perhaps we could use some clarification around public comments in terms of when residents email, um, comments to the board. I think we could use some clarification around when those comments are just distributed to board members via email. As happened at our last meeting, we received, um, at least 40 emails via Dropbox, um, and in some cases as late as four o'clock before our meeting. Um, and so in terms of board members having time to be able to read those going into the meeting, um, there's a challenge there. But I also think there is perhaps some confusion on the part of, um, residents as far as if they submit written statements, does this get read into the record or not? Um, there seemed to be some question about that. Um, it doesn't seem to be a consistent pattern that we're following. Do people have to specifically ask to have it read? Is it assumed that it will be read? Um, and so we don't have to flesh out all these questions right now, I realize, because we have more on our agenda, but I would like to schedule a time for us to discuss, particularly to Dan's point, um, residents who, um, you know, and to Erica's point, that we're still going to have an issue with the virus moving forward. And so even for meeting, what are residents going to be able to do?
Okay.
Um, and so if a resident can't attend a meeting but wants things to go on the public record, then we have to clarify that for people, I think.
Okay. So let me try to, let me get, okay. Uh, as, um, as far as the public record, I mean, typically with 40, that would have been impossible to read, but I will ask Eric to, we'll put up a policy together on how we read email, um, um, into the, into the public record. Okay. I mean, it, 40, you can't read. I mean, you'd be here all night reading 40. I read one tonight because there was one, but we, you're right.
Right. But if we, if those 40 people showed up, would we have turned them away?
No, no, they would have done public comment. They would have been just like everybody, we had 13.
Right. So then what, so then what difference?
Well, here's the difference, here's Patty, Patty, here's the difference, if I may, we would have read the same letter 40 times.
Yeah.
So that's what would transpire last year.
We're trying to, we gotta streamline our, well, otherwise we'll be here till midnight. So we'll come up with a policy and distribute it to the board. So let me now, um, uh, talk. Um, you're right about COVID, Erica. I mean, we are, um, you know, uh, going into the, the fourth phase. John and I, uh, are working on a, um, e-newsletter that will go out, right, John? And we're, uh, identifying what phase four means to our community and, and, um, obviously the continued restrictions, because there still are. Um, and we still ask that our older adults, uh, 65 and older, um, you know, continue to, um, you know, especially those with underlying health conditions, continue to, uh, stay home if they can. In fact, um, Helen Kwan's, uh, our senior COVID team is still in existence. We haven't, you know, disbanded that, nor will we. Um, in fact, I want to read a very, very, just a, you know, a heartwarming letter. Uh, the penmanship on this letter was insanely beautiful. Her name is Harriet and she lives on Foster Avenue. And it says, "Dear Madam President, 68 years ago, my husband and I built our family home here. And over the years, we have been grateful for the benefits we gained by living in this community. The schools, the fire department, the police, the care for the environment and our trees and all, uh, uh, all have been of great service. Now at this dreadful pandemic time, more than ever, these, uh, this village has provided me with help and care and security beyond any expectations. The purpose of this letter is to thank you for encouraging these services, the officials and their kind, um, dispatcher and the most reliable volunteers and shoppers. I am 96 years old and I find myself at a loss for words in trying to express, uh, my thanks. You all have made these days of isolation tolerable. Most sincerely, Harriet." This is a fabulous letter and it just, um, I'm, 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 I'm touched by it. I am pleased by it. I thank our village staff. I thank our police and fire department. I thank Helen Kwan, who led our senior COVID team and continues to lead this, uh, COVID team, um, in helping, um, our most vulnerable and most isolated, and those are our seniors. Um, and, um, we will continue to always take care of our seniors, um, in our community. That's a commitment I will continue to make. Um, so let me just, uh, a couple of the things that I like to ask, um, Lisa and Eric, uh, only because I know we have some changes in the minutes for today. And I just want to make note that, um, in our May 26 minutes that we unanimously approved, um, it states, "President Ducey thanked Mr. Crosby and Mr. Housio. She noted the complexity of the issues and stated she wanted the trustees to take time to digest it. She recommended scheduling a cow meeting on June 8th and to have questions ready based on this introduction." Again, this paragraph comes from the May 26 minutes that was unanimously approved by the village board. It continues and it says, "The village board reached a consensus to schedule a cow meeting on June 8th at 5:30 PM to discuss the affordable housing plan." What I'd like to add, and it's in, uh, the audio, is it, I also asked, um, that the, um, the plan be on the agenda for approval at our regularly scheduled board meeting of June 8th. So in addition to the cow, I also requested, uh, that to be, uh, on the plan. Again, uh, no opposition is according to the audio. So I'd like to have that in the record, please, um, if you don't mind. Okay. Um, so what else do I have here? I think that's it for me. I do want to, yes, thank you to, um, the elected officials in Maywood, specifically Isaiah Brandon, who reached out personally to me, and I'm sure, uh, it sounded like to many of the trustees, inviting us, uh, to the march. And, uh, that was very, um, I was very heartfelt and, um, he, he and all the members of, uh, the communities, Bellwood, Maywood, uh, Broadview, uh, Forest Park, all made, uh, at least me feel very welcome as part of the march and, um, is part of the, uh, the message. So, um, again, I thank, uh, Isaiah, um, for being, uh, kind and gracious and welcoming to all of us. So, um, we'll get, that's all I have at this point in time. So moving on to, um, the 4A, B, and C, I'd like to take 4A. What I'm going to do, and I have to get up on, I have to get out of my exit here. Uh, sorry, guys, hang on for one split second. I can't move. Okay. Uh, I gotta get to the packet. I, I don't print my packet, I try to save trees. So if you give me two seconds, I'll get to. Okay. Okay, here we go. So what I'd like to do is read the resolution in its entirety and then I will address trustee Brennan's, uh, last minute additions, uh, her email that she sent at 4:16 PM this evening. Um, and, um, we can discuss that, but I will ask the board, um, after I read this to vote on it, I am asking you to vote it as, as is, with the exception of typos and, uh, with the exception of adding some few attachments, um, uh, to the document, um, which I will talk through. Uh, but I would ask the village board to, um, to pass it as is, as trustee Bachner said, this is the beginning, um, of a journey. It's always has, it always has been. Um, and this, uh, resolution, I believe, is needed for us to talk to the community so that the community understands, um, the relationship between them and the law enforcement. Without these values statements and without these principles and without the understanding of how, what, what we're going to implement, it would be very difficult to have a forum with our community. So I see this as a, uh, a pre, pre, sir, pre cur, you know, beforehand, if you will, to, to the forum and a benefit to the forum. So I am going to read it in its entirety and then ask, uh, um, for the vote after we, we discuss the trustee Brennan's additions. So it says, "Whereas the village of River Forest is duly organizing, um, validity, uh, existing municipality created in accordance with the constitution," I better put my glasses on, that's the problem, "of the state of Illinois of 1970 and the laws of the state. And whereas the village recognizes that the killings of George Floyd, Barona Taylor, Hamod, uh, um, Arbery, Ebberry, and the loss of the far too many black lives to the list at the hands of the law enforcement officers have left our nation anguished and outraged. And whereas these killings and the others like it have all Americans justifiably demanding nationwide reforms to law enforcement and criminal justice systems to protect all citizens, particularly those who are most vulnerable to the infringement or denial of their civil rights. And whereas law enforcement agencies have been called upon to respond to situations that are better left to others in order to fill a void created by the lack of needed supported, uh, programs, including schools, discipline, eviction, enforcement, addiction, and substance abuse, where others may be more appropriately trained to help those in need despite additional training, uh, resources that have been provided to, uh, law enforcement officers." Somehow I got lost here. Uh, sorry, guys. Okay. Uh, I keep getting booted off. Uh, "The village recognizes that the issues in the criminal justice system, including the adverse impacts of overcriminalization on minorities, extend well beyond just the behavior of police officers. And that while national change is required, local action is where the village can begin making the most immediate difference. And whereas the village president and the board of trustees recognizes that the only, uh, that only through listening, learning, healing, and substantive action will we all work to ensure that law enforcement officers can continue to serve this community ethically and professionally. And whereas the corporate authorities recognize and hold in high esteem the service the River Forest Police Department provides to the community when immediate help is needed and their willingness to support, promote, and participate in systematic reforms to bring about the changes needed, including the rethinking of the roles and functions in the community. And whereas the corporate authorities, as leaders of this community, along with the River Forest Police Department and all village staff and officials, value the life of every person and consider life to be the highest value and that all persons should be treated with dignity, compassion, and respect. And whereas the village rejects discrimination toward any person that is based on race, ethnicity, religion, color." religion, color, nationality, immigrant status, sexual orientation, gender disability, or familial status. Now therefore, be it resolved by the president and board of trustees of the Village of River Forest, Illinois as follows. Section one, that each whereas paragraph above is incorporated by reference into the section one and made part hereof as material and operative provisions of this resolution. Section two is the principles for the relationship between the community and law enforcement. That the village affirms the following principles regarding the relationship between the community and law enforcement. One, the village endorses the six pillars in the report of the president's task force on Twenty-First Century Policing. The first pillar is to build and rebuild trust through procedural justice, transparency, accountability, and honest recognition of past and present obstacles. Two, the village endorses the four pillars of procedural justice, which are fairness, voice, and opportunity for citizens and police to believe that they are heard, transparency and impartiality. Three, the village endorses the values inherent in community policing, which includes community partnerships involving law enforcement, engagement of police officers with residents outside of interactions specific to enforcement of laws, and problem solving that is collaborative, not one-sided, and works with the community, not against it. Four, the village believes that developing strong, ongoing relationships between law enforcement and communities of color at the leadership level and street level will be the keys to diminishing and eliminating racial tension. And five, the village believes that law enforcement and community leaders have a mutual responsibility to encourage all citizens to gain a better understanding and knowledge of the law to assist them in their interactions with law enforcement officers. Section three is the implementation of those principles. That the village vows to work together and stand together in the community at the state level to implement the values and principles in the resolution and to replace mistrust with mutual trust wherever, whenever, and however the village can. By, number one, requiring de-escalation training for village law enforcement officers to ensure the safety of community members and officers. The village endorses using de-escalation tactics and enhanced communication methods to reduce the potential for confrontation that endanger law enforcement officers and the public and the principle that human life should be taken only as last resort. Two, requiring the review and the modification, where needed, of the River Forest Police Department use-of-force policy, reporting requirements and pursuit reports. Three, requiring transparent review of the River Forest Police Department policies, training initiatives, services, and officer behavior, including through the use of technology, to document and audit events, officer actions, and citizens' encounters, and through the formal review of use-of-force events, including whether officers gave verbal warning prior to using deadly force and/or warning shots, and whether the use of force was necessary to mitigate the threat and evaluate if less interest options were available. Four, reaffirming that the River Forest Police Department does not seek approval from judges, apply, um, excuse me, does not seek approval from judges, apply for, or execute no-knock warrants, train in or use chokeholds on arrestees or members of the public, or shoot at moving vehicles as they are outside the River Forest Police Department use-of-force policy and can be considered deadly force, and requires officers to intervene and immediately stop any excessive force used by other officers and report events immediately to supervisors. Five, supporting efforts by the village board of fire and police commissioners to diversify the River Forest Police Department and recognize that law enforcement and communities have a mutual responsibility and should work together to make a concerted effort to recruit, promote, and retain a diverse police department. Six, continuing to create and provide opportunities that allow the River Forest Police Department to engage in the free exchange of diverse ideas and experience with courtesy, sensitivity, and respect, opportunities for collaboration, and constructive strategies to engage in honest disagreement. Seven, including through the addition of civil rights vulnerable population section to the crime prevention program to focus on minority and other protected class initiatives. Eight, continuing to ensure that the proper screening, education, and training of the River Forest Police Department, police officers, to keep them accountable for conduct that does not comply with the village's policies and standards. Nine, supporting legislative efforts to reform and rescind Illinois Criminal Code and Illinois Vehicle Code sentencing guidelines that require mandatory minimums, excessive sentencing, and incarcerations that disproportionately target and promote inequity, inequality for minorities and other vulnerable populations. Section four is the notice of the resolution adoption, that the village should work collaboratively with the community to widely publicize the adoption of this resolution throughout River Forest. And section five is the repeal, that all resolutions, motions, or parts thereof in conflict with the resolution shall be and the same are hereby repealed. The effectiveness, this is the resolution that shall be in force and effect upon its adoption and approval according to law. And now, that is the extent of our resolution. Again, I ask the board, uh, to approve this, uh, as is, uh, with the exception of a typo in sec, uh, second sentence that has an additional "that." Um, in section two, where it talks about the president's task force on Twenty-First Century Policing, I ask that we do attach, we do attach, uh, the report, the task force report. Um, I also, uh, on section three, I, uh, ask that we do replace community members and officers with "all." And insert supports the before principle in the last line. And I also, uh, um, ask that we change the crime prevention program, um, to add existing, I agree with that, existing, uh, River Forest Police Department, um, I, I think that's what you wanted, is to existing, um, the crime prevention program, which is an existing River Forest Police Department, um, uh, program. So, uh, the other two, I, I do not believe, um, I do not support it. Um, I believe that it's, um, unfounded and, and frankly, um, doesn't fit. Um, and I will, um, read Trustee Brennan's, uh, email to the public, where she asks that the, we replace the fourth whereas with, "The village wishes to explore reallocating and redirecting municipal funding from police to other government agencies and programs that can address issues such as school discipline, mental health, addiction, eviction, enforcement, and homelessness, with the goals of discriminating and destigmatizing people with mental health, poverty, and addiction problems, reducing officer workload, and making more efficient use of taxpayer money." Again, I, I do not believe that should be inserted. Uh, the section three, section, subsection five, Trustee Brennan adds, uh, that she would like the, the village to, uh, replace section five with this language. "The village and the River Forest Police Department recognize that a more diverse police department provides advantages, including increased empathy and relatability, bridging of communication, narrowing of disparities, greater ease in forming community partnerships, and increasing public trust, and share therefore," typo here, "and therefore share that the mutual responsibility to work together to recruit, promote, and retain a diverse police department." Again, I, 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 um, I do not recommend that we add that subsection five in there. Um, so, I'm gonna ask, uh, Lisa to take the vote, and you can make comment. You can, uh, vote no, you can make comment at that point, um, as you wish. So, Lisa?
Kathy, can I just explain now, or should I have to explain at my, that's the time?
Okay. I'm sorry, I need a motion first. So if I can get a motion to approve the resolution affirming the Village of River Forest principles regarding the relationship between the community and law enforcement, given, um, with the changes that I had asked for, um, from Trustee Brennan's, uh, email. And we can, we can add more if there is more. Um, if I can get a, a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve, uh, a resolution affirming the Village of River Forest principles regarding the relationship between the community and law enforcement. Second.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Katie, were you, is that you talking? I didn't hear.
Uh, yeah, I just asked a second ago whether I should, um, explain the revisions I had proposed now, or were you asking for that to be done?
Um, well, I mean, of the two that I said, I, um, you can go ahead and explain it, if you like.
Yeah, so thanks for accepting the, I guess, five of the seven, um, suggested revisions. And then for the first revision that I had suggested, which was in the fourth whereas clause, I, that, um, the purpose of that whereas clause as drafted, um, it, and it's, to go back to it, it says that law enforcement agencies have been called upon to respond to situations that are better left to others in order to fill a void created by the lack of needed supportive program. Um, my sense of that was that what we were getting at was to reallocate and redirect the, you know, funding from our, um, law enforcement to those programs that have not been, uh, that have not been funded. So I, I didn't think that that was, um, a difficult, uh, revision or, uh, I didn't think that that would be a problem. And then also, the second part of, um, the whereas clause, just explaining, uh, the reasoning for, uh, giving those, shifting those responsibilities from law enforcement to other agencies and programs that can handle them would be to decriminalize and destigmatize people with mental health, um, who are poverty-stricken and have addiction problems, also reducing officer workload, um, which would make more efficient use of taxpayer monies, money. So that was the reason why I proposed that revision of the fourth whereas clause. And then, um, going to section three, you read, um, the revision that I had proposed in subsection five, um, which really just, um, explained, um, the advantages of having a more diverse police department, which is, there's a, um, proposal that we recognize that a more diverse police department is what we want. So when I read that, uh, the draft resolution, I, I just did a Google search about what are the, the, um, advantages to having a more diverse police department? And I found this list that I thought was really helpful. Um, and I thought that it made this resolution a richer res- resolution if we included these advantages in this resolution. And the advantages, again, are increased, increased empathy and relatability, bridging of communication, narrowing of disparities, greater ease in forming community partnerships, and increasing public trust. Uh, and then you did, I did have a typo there, thank you for pointing that out. And, um, sharing the mutual responsibility to work together to, uh, recruit, promote, retain, and retain a diverse police department. So I just wanted to, uh, clarify and explain the reasons why I had proposed those revisions.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Um, well, um, I mean, I can leave it up to the trustees if you want to discuss anything at this point in time. Um, um, I, I will just start. Uh, go ahead, somebody was gonna start?
I was gonna jump in if you don't.
Go ahead, Bob.
So, um, so first of all, I, you know, I got this at, you know, five-twenty tonight, so, you know, um, and, and loo of everything that's been happening in the world, obviously I've, I've done some reading on some of the topics that are being discussed. Um, some of the things that I think, Katie, that, um, Trustee Brennan is bringing out, um, are things that we're already paying for, frankly. Um, you know, uh, our township has a mental health, um, service, it has youth services, um, it has elderly services. And so, I don't know that re-appropriating funds from the village to, to others who are already doing the job, you know, I think it's their responsibility to assess and come forward with monies that they need and, and make that part of the levy that they require to, in order to perform the services of the township, number one. Um, in terms of mental health, um, if the chief is there, he can correct me, but I believe our, our police get, uh, get training from Thrive on how to handle certain situations, um, and, and again, how to take those situations and elevate those to the, the proper authority. Uh, and then, you know, the last part of, I guess, that I, that I just wanted to bring up again for the chief is, you know, what kind of staffing levels are we at? I mean, do, are there funds available, you know, when we start talking about bringing on additional people to take on these, these, um, these things? You know, um, will this, will, will normal policing suffer because we're taking on, again, roles that other organizations or other municipal bodies are supposed to be handling? So those are my questions.
Yeah, um, I think Katie is, uh, Trustee Brennan is saying something different. She's saying, take it away from the, defund the police and take it away from the police and give it to the other government agencies that should be doing it. Unfortunately, we don't fund those, um, uh, events. We don't do evictions. The Sheriff's Department does the evictions. We don't, um, take care of homelessness. The township provides those services. Um, many of the things that you recommended in your defunding, uh, comment, um, is just, doesn't make any sense. Our budget, if you understood the budget and understand how it rolls up, um, you'll see that all the funding primarily goes to salary and pensions and some, and training, of course. Um, if you read, uh, any of the, uh, Illinois IML, um, information that we get, um, there is significant amount of unfunded mandates that come in from the state of Illinois and from the federal government that mandates many of the training for our police department, which is unfunded. And so we need to fund that. Does it come out of the sky? It has to be funded by our taxpayers. And so if you look through the budget and you look at the detail, you'll see that we are not funding school police, that we do not fund, you know, um, these programs. Um, so, the idea that you'd ask to defund it just puzzles me a little bit and it confuses me, and that's why I reacted it, because it's just, we should be funding our police department more, frankly. Um, they're probably underfunded. So, uh, Yeah, I mean, that's what it says, redirect municipal funding from police.
No, but what I'm reading is the initial whereas, and I was just following along with that. What I thought was the, the thought in that, which was that our law enforcement has been called upon to respond to situations that are better left to others. So I was following along with that.
In my, my mind, since salaries and pensions are the principal budget for the police department, to reallocate funds means getting rid of police officers. And that would be the concern I have. As I understand it, we are at the, the minimum for staffing. I think Erica said to me in her earlier email, that we're still down two officers from two thousand and eighty. So I just don't know how, what fund there are to reallocate other than cutting into the police, you know, actually taking, getting rid of an officer.
That's right.
It seems to me to be the only source of funding.
That is correct, Tom.
And if I may add, this is Raz. Um, in the historical part, I think that, um, we, at this stage of the game, we would be taking away from our police department to fund whatever we're proposing to, uh, these other services. Um, I'm not inclined to do that personally, because I do think we're sort of short, uh, on the police officers we have. But historically, what I wanted to add is, um, since I got on the board, we talked about, um, respecting other entities in terms of what they do and not trying to overlap what other agencies do, whether they're state, whether they're township, whether they're other sister agencies. Um, so, the, the idea about that is we wouldn't, basically, we wouldn't be burdening our taxpayers by funding similar roles or responsibilities that are really been assigned to other, other sister agencies or entities that we have. So, in this case, um, I would say that the references I took in the resolution was that these are responsibilities and activities that these other agencies were already doing. So, I, I, we shouldn't be taking it away from the police department to fund them elsewhere when they have that responsibility or, or funding mechanism to accommodate that. Um, at least that was my understanding. Um, and on the housekeeping matter, while I have the floor, um, the motion was made to adopt the resolution as it is. I know, Kathy, you accepted some amendments to it. And I would just like to amend the motion to say, um, that we also, uh, accept the amendment that, as outlined by, uh, by the village president.
Yes, thank you, Raz. I was gonna clean that up.
Okay.
Um, I assume that's okay by Bob and Tom?
Sure.
Yep.
Sure.
Yes, okay. So, i- is there any other comments regarding Katie's, uh, Trustee Brennan's request to change for, uh, asking for redirecting municipal funding? If not, then I, um,
Well, I guess, I guess, here's where I am at with this. Um, I recognize the, um, importance of having this resolution, and I recognize even the, the idea that doing this sooner than later would be a good thing. Um, I understand that with resolutions, ordinance, all of our things, we do have the ability at some point in time to amend them after this fact. Um, but I guess what I struggle with is that we were given this, we do have a trustee who has made some suggestions that I didn't see until late this afternoon, so really couldn't read through them.
read through them and to think about what she is suggesting, or if it makes sense or not. I mean, I know, Kathy, you addressed it, but then everything went so quickly in terms of you explaining what you're accepting and not accepting. So, to be honest with you, I don't know that I'm 100% clear what we're amending to what...
Okay, I'll repeat it. I'll repeat it for you.
Well, I mean, I feel like...
Because I want to make sure you understand. No, I think, let me repeat it. Because I think you all have it in front of you.
Right, but can I ask you a question first, please?
Yes, of course.
So, while I recognize that you made the point of having this done to be able to move forward, I guess my question would be, if there is some question, and to be able to see a clean document, what would be the problem of officially voting for this on July 13th at our next meeting?
Because I'm ready to vote, Patty. I don't see anything in here that is of major substantive, other than the two that we're talking about, the defunding of police. And that's what I'm asking you right now, if you support the defunding of police. And if you don't, please tell us. If you do, then I'd like to know that. And the section three, which is substantive, indicating that a diverse police department provides advantages, which we all know it does, but it also assumes that we don't have these advantages, that we don't doing these things. Now, that's why I think the words that are in the current resolution requiring us, the fire and police board, to look to recruit, promote, and retain diverse police department is a good thing. We want diverse police officers because it makes it a better team for our community. The team itself and the police department becomes better. I don't know if we bridge more communication. I don't know if we get more empathetic because we have a diverse police department. I know we should have a diverse police department, and I know that by having one makes us a better department, yes. But that's not what this says. So, that's why that's substantive.
Well, but again, I guess, right, and so, again, for me personally, not being able to be able to take the time and really look at...
Patty, we're ready to vote. You got to tell me what, if you don't like that, it's in front of you. I know we sent it to you, because, yes, we got it late. I apologize. Every time we, you know, we sent this out Thursdays, we used to be Fridays, we sent Thursdays, and we still get things at 4:00. So, I apologize, I do. I think it's not right, and I think it put us all on our back heels, and I apologize for that. But unfortunately, I mean, I could have got a call on Saturday saying, hey, this is coming, or Sunday, or something, but we didn't.
Well, in all fairness, though, in all fairness, Kathy, is that board members schedule their time around other life commitments, right?
Yeah.
And so, in all fairness, a trustee may not get to a particular item until late Sunday. If their time means they didn't get to the board packet until late Sunday, then unfortunately, they don't have questions for further clarification until the last minute. And so, this is, again, why I always make the point of, we should have discussion at one meeting and vote at another meeting, so that we have the time to have these questions answered, have the time to reflect on these points that people are being raised, be able to improve whatever it is we're discussing, and vote on it at a second meeting. I mean, I have the similar issue with a later agenda item of wanting information that I didn't get until late, so...
But, but, but everything on this, the twin city covenant today, tonight, is the same thing. So, you're not going to vote on the twin city covenant? Because we didn't discuss that.
That has nothing to, no, that's just a point of thought.
No, but my point is, is that we get resolutions and proclamations, and all the time, Patty. And so, I hear you, but I can't fix the problem. We tried to fix it by pushing it back to Thursday, and that apparently doesn't work. So, I am asking, I hear you, but I am, I'm going to ask the board to...
We're talking about two different issues here.
Okay. All I'm saying is that I, like I said, it's with 4B, too. Okay, 4B is the same issue. We never had it on our agenda to discuss. So, now, but that you'll vote for. So, I think, I'd like to just know if you are, you know, if you're in favor of trustee Brennan's defunding. If not, please let us know. I mean, it's important.
I'm not even, I'm not even sure I'm 100% clear what trustee Brennan's, if she's even saying defunding.
Well, here's, let me read it again. The village wishes to explore reallocating and redirecting.
Well, actually, can I have this? I'd rather hear from trustee Brennan.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Brennan, can you tell me, are you saying you want defunding of our police department? Is that what your point of your comment is?
No, it's not.
Okay, so Katie, could you explain the reallocating, redirecting municipal funding from police to other government agencies? What does that mean? What do we do with that funding?
So, I was looking at the fourth whereas clause as drafted, and I thought it was confusing and a little awkward, but at its base, I read it to say that law enforcement agencies have been called upon to respond to situations that are better left to others in order to avoid created by not having enough other supportive programs. And I thought I was, you know, rewording that, and I just want to be very clear, because a couple times you've left the word out, explore, and just, and you've re-categorized my wording from reallocating and redirecting to defunding, which is really sort of a hot term right now. So, I would appreciate that you don't put that word on my proposed revision, because it's not what I said.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. We won't use, we won't use defunding. That's fair enough. I just don't know what that means, if it's not taking funding away from the police. You know, the word in the community, the word in, that's going around right now, it's a pretty popular word, it's called defunding. And defunding is basically that. So, we don't need to call it that. I just want to make sure that we all underst, that's what it says. That's what your email says. So, anyway, fair enough. Okay.
No, and I don't read it that way either.
Okay.
And to be careful that, you know, what I proposed, what was explore, reallocating, and redirecting, and I was extrapolating that from the whereas clause that's drafted there. Perhaps I'm extrapolating it incorrectly. It was a proposed revision. I did my best. I apologize to everyone that I didn't send this to Eric and Kathy till this afternoon when I got to it, but I actually thought I was doing a good thing by doing that, rather than just bringing it up during this meeting.
Yeah.
Well, no, and I, Katie, I absolutely appreciate the input, and this is, this is the kind of stuff that I think we should be doing at our board, is having this dialogue and this back-and-forth conversation. And so, I would agree with Katie that this whereas is sort of a funny, so we're saying whereas this is happening with our officers, but then what? What point goes on to speak to that? And I get a sense that that's what trustee Brennan was trying to do. And so, I don't know where further in the resolution it speaks to, so what then?
No, we're just talking about...
Like, we're saying this whereas, but so what then?
We're talking about the fourth whereas. That's what you need to...
I know.
Okay, that's where we're at.
Right, that is what I'm talking about.
Okay, so, again, she wants to replace the fourth whereas with this language. So, I'm asking you, do you want to replace the fourth whereas with this whereas? That's what I'm asking, Patty.
Well, I personally would like the time to be able to consider both and to hear a different, what would be your, what in the resolution would be your response to this whereas? If we don't use trustee Brennan's, what would answer this point of...
I keep what we've got. I'm suggesting we keep what we have in the resolution.
In the base, reallocation, defunding, whatever, I mean, you're taking money from one place and giving it to someplace else. So, I don't, regardless of the word, that's the net effect of the proposed change to the whereas clause.
Well, again, I'm not saying I'm 100%... I think we're talking about different things here in terms of what trustee Brennan is suggesting with this whereas, and how it seems folks are taking it. And I guess, to my point is, if we have this whereas, that we're acknowledging enforcement agencies have been called upon to do these various things, right? Then what? So, what are we saying with this resolution is going to help address that? What are we doing as a village to help address that whereas then, is my point.
I read that it's more of a call to the agencies that are responsible for doing the job that the police now have to do, that they pick up the slack instead of relying on the police to do those jobs. That was just the way that I read it initially.
So, you're saying that we're developing this resolution, and now we're going to either expect, or are we going to be proactively submitting this to these other agencies to say, look, here's our whereas, we need you to do something about this?
But those agencies already have a mandate to do those things.
Yeah.
The Cook County Sheriff, the Cook County Sheriff...
I understand that, I understand that, but we're saying in this whereas that perhaps it's not happening, which is why we have this whereas.
No, it's a proclamation. It's a proclamation, it's saying that we want to, that we won't take it on, that the entities, the government entities that do this will continue to take it on. So...
That's not how I read this.
Okay, well, that...
And I get the sense that that's not how trustee Brennan, I will be for her, but...
But here's something, so, again, so to Google, if you look at the Brookings Institute, they say, defund the police means reallocating, redirecting, funding away from the police to other government agencies.
That's what defunding says.
If you didn't know, you know, so if you didn't know what it meant before, it's exactly what trustee Brennan, it's that in her whereas. She wants to reallocate and redirect, okay? That's defunding the police, okay? And again, I go back to, there's other government agencies responsible for doing these things. So, are they not doing those? And do we need to, do we need to figure out how to get those people to do those in a time of need? Yes, we do.
Trustee Brennan, I will say that when I read this resolution, I agree with you in the way that that whereas reads. Where I see the answer to that is section three, clause three, where it says that we are going to review River Forest Police Department policies and how they do their work. Because if there is a place where the police are being called upon for these services, and they're the first contact to something that's a mental health issue or something, maybe that's not the right way to go. Maybe the call gets put out to Thrive first. I don't, I honestly don't know enough about what our police department or 911 policies are to say who goes out first on something like that, but I see section three, clause three, as the acknowledgement that we need to do a substantive review of where the police are being called out to do work that isn't necessarily under their purview. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I agree with it. I agree with that.
That's how I...
I think you're right, Erica. I mean, in terms of how, the how, you know, the implementation of that whereas. So, I think you've stated it well.
Kathy, can I add something?
Yes.
I guess I'm going to take another shot at explaining this, and I do apologize, because I took, I just read what Katie said, and maybe she didn't intend it the way, but I just read exploring, reallocating, and redirecting, and I'm going to stick with that language. To me, I read it that we're going to take away from our police department to move it elsewhere. And that's where I'm not comfortable with. So, I don't even think, at this point, we have a budget. Basically, we're going to be taking money away from the police department when we decide to move it elsewhere. And I'm not comfortable with it. We can explore, you want, but if someone's going to ask you to do it, I'm not going to do it. The other thing that I wanted to add here in explaining what I think, the way I read this paragraph whereas, is that there are certain things that our police department is being asked for, but I understand that we somehow try to accommodate, but we really, it's not our responsibility. We dealt with that with the school districts, when we had to deal with those safety officers. Another thing I want to add that's current is, right now, our police force, as part of dementia-friendly being recognized, they took training on dementia-friendly. Now, they, that helps them to understand how to work with dementia-friendly residents that we have, but it doesn't mean that they're now going to be taking care of our dementia-friendly residents. That's more on services for the township. I guess, so what I'm saying is, some of these additional trainings that our police officer may have may be somewhat related, and I do think it's beneficial for our residents, but that doesn't mean they take on all the responsibilities that come with that interaction. So, that's how I read this paragraph, that there are certain things that our police officers may be doing, but they shouldn't be doing all of it. We have these other sister agencies that take care of it. That's how I read this paragraph.
So, trustee Vasquez, I guess what I would say as a follow-up to your point, this is Patty, for those who can't see, I think you're absolutely right that it's not going to fall on our police officers to further work with anybody that might have any of these issues, whether it's dementia, whether it's some other mental health issue, whether it's an addiction. But I think the point is, I don't know that it's even necessarily a reflection to say some of our agencies are not doing their job. I don't mean to say that that's what's happening here. I think there's a broader acknowledgement that because of a reduction in these types of services all over, even outside of River Forest, the fact that insurance doesn't necessarily cover a lot of these things, it's just, unfortunately, by default, our officers end up dealing with people who are having some sort of issue or concern. And the other reality is that our officers are working 24/7. These other agencies have hours, right? And so, people aren't necessarily having an issue or a breakdown during normal working hours. They're having issues at times more likely when it's just our officers who are on duty and responding to it. And so, you're right that our officers absolutely need the kind of training we are getting, they are getting, and I applaud all of what they do, and it's important that we continue to provide resources in order for them to get those resource sets training, right? But, we're kind of talking about different things in a way, because there's a much bigger question more broadly to municipalities and government in general, and how we treat mental health and health insurance. I mean, it's a whole bigger issue as well there. And to say that, or to even perhaps imply, or whatever, that it's, that there's other agencies within our community that aren't doing things, and they need to be doing their job, so our police officers don't have to, I don't think that's a fair assessment either.
I think you're taking my statement out of context, because this does not say that the other agencies are not doing their job. It says they are better left to others that can fill or fill that void. And our officers aren't the ones who should be doing that.
Right, so...
Right, no, I got that.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm sorry if you pick on this, I'm going off of other comments that have just been made in the course of this conversation, is that this is not a question about who's not really doing their, pulling their weight in the job, so to speak. And so, that's why our officers are having to deal with this. Our officers are going to have to deal with these issues, no matter what, unless we have a much bigger change in the way we treat healthcare and treat mental health outside of, even beyond River Forest. So, that's, I think, a given here. And so, this training that they're going to have in all these areas is also going to be a given.
Yes, and we agree with that. I think you'll get, I agree with that. These are givens, and some of them are mandated, unfunded, by the way. So, okay, any other comments about this resolution? Because it sounds like we've kind of circled that. Again, I just, it sounds like, so I'm going to ask Lisa to go ahead and take the vote.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes, and I want to thank trustee Bachner for answering my question about where she sees that answer of the whereas. But I would also say that I would like us to, in the course of these forums that we're having, if by that conversation there are things that come up that could help us improve on this resolution, that I would like to make a recommendation that we amend accordingly, if that were to be the case.
Yep, we always do. So, thank you, yes. Okay, moving forward to the twin village, not twin city, covenant with the village of Maywood. And I am so pleased that this is on our agenda, although we didn't talk about it as a group until now. I am pleased that it's part of it. I know you all do your research and you do your work, like we do with everything on the agenda. But I know that trustee Bachner, I know I've been involved with Miguel, so welcome, trustee Jones. We are very happy that you've joined our meeting here tonight. And what I'd like to do is get a motion to approve the village covenant with the village of Maywood. of Maywood, and a second, and then I will ask trustee Bachner to read the covenant, since she's worked very hard with you trustee Jones to make this happen. So, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the Twin Village Covenant with the Village of Maywood.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, if I can ask you trustee Bachner to please read the covenant to the community, and then we can discuss it.
Yes, with pleasure. So, this is the Maywood, River Forest, Twin Village Covenant, and it starts with a quote by Martin Luther King. Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. It continues on to say, in response to the hate crime that occurred at the River Forest Jewel Grocery Store on June 3, 2020, the Village of Maywood and the Village of River Forest are fully vested to the principles of humanity, equity, and inclusion. This covenant will guide the overarching spirit of our two distinct towns to think as one, and to interact in more collaborative ways. And the five points that we list here are in ways that we can collaborate are, one, a commitment to a regional perspective on commercial and residential investment and development; two, a recognition of multicultural holidays, as in Juneteenth, Cinco de Mayo, or others; three, explore partnerships for supplier diversity; four, support the relationship building of Maywood and Oak Park River Forest Chambers of Commerce; and five, explore collaboration of equipment, facilities, and services. And again, I just want to thank trustee Jones for his leadership on this, and starting the draft with these five points of where the discussion just begins, right? So there are so many other ways that we can collaborate, and I think that, as he's been talking with me and other trustees, we've been here, thinking about those and excited about the other opportunities. But these, these are ways that trustee Jones brought to the table of where he sees a lot of impact can occur.
Yep, I, I agree. Before we move on, I do want to just say that the other half of trustee Brennan's email to us at 416, she asked that we revise and remove the first sentence, which is the one in response to the hate crime that occurred at River Forest Jewel Store on June 3. Strike that, and add neighboring villages, plural, and then strike the village of, the village of. And so it should re, she would like it to read, the neighbor, neighboring villages of Maywood and River Forest are fully vested in the principles of humanity, equity, inclusion. So I think it reads, the way we moved it and seconded, I, I like the way it reads, like, we've talked about, Erica, you know, it, it's, it's not just because of the hate crime, but it did, it was an element of why this came together, and we should acknowledge that as a, as a community. So I'm in favor of keeping the language the way it is. So unless anybody is, have differing thoughts on that, please let me know right now.
This is Katie. Well, maybe I'll just explain the reason why. Okay.
Okay.
So there was a resident who reached out to me and was concerned about that initial phrase to the, referring to the hate crime that occurred at the Jewel Grocery Store as the initial sentence to this overall Twin Village Covenant that we're very excited about, and, you know, very hopeful will be successful. And this resident was concerned that covenant highlights that incident at the beginning, and it's an incident involving one resident, and the resident felt that it doesn't, that one resident's actions should not be reflective of the whole Village of River Forest, and specifically be in the very first line to this covenant.
I, I agree with Katie on this one, is, this, this, this is gonna be around forever, and, and we want to, we want the community to heal from that, from that incident, and not have a constant reminder of it. And so, you know, if we, if we're doing this as part of a healing process, then that's great, but again, it shouldn't drive us to, this is why we're doing this. We should do this because it's the right thing to do.
This is Patty, if I can weigh in on this. I guess I have to disagree with that, and I would agree with president Aduci in terms of keeping it. I mean, a, a healing, this is being done as a healing, for whom? And there's no denying that this was a hate crime in our community. Yes, it does not show that our, this is who our whole community is. That's why I was hopeful and very pleased to see the residents show up at the two marches that were just, you know, we just had, because we are not reflected by this one resident. But the reality is, is that that act shows us, even in our local community, that this bias, this hatred, this racism, does in fact exist in our community, whether we want to admit it or not. And, and, and who knows how many more there may be out there? The fact that there's a specific date to it tells people in the future that, look, this is what happened on June 3, 2020, and here's what we did as a community to make it better. I think it absolutely needs to be in there.
And this is Russ. I'd like to add to trustee Hennig's comments, and I agree with what she's saying as well. I understand that this is an embarrassing situation that occurred, and actually deplorable, but I also want to remind everybody that, you know, the village acted appropriately and promptly to address this issue. It's my understanding that this incident is also what, sadly as it sounds, inspired trustee Jones to, instead of turning something bad, try to make something good out of it, and, and then approach our village with this covenant, so that it represents exactly what we are, working together, and not, as support or in anything, actually negates that hate, hate crime that occurred. And the fact of the matter is, it did occur. So if that's what sparked it, then it is what it is, and we just need to move ahead. I, I, I say I'm in favor of leaving it in.
And the reality too, if I may add, is that we don't want people to forget that happened, right? We want to be reminded that we have to work towards ending that. And the only way to do that is to always remember that it happened, and it could happen again. And what are we gonna do to prevent that?
Okay, so it sounds like, unless, Tom, you've got a different opinion, it sounds like the majority of the board wants to keep the heading in, including myself.
I am concerned that, as written, as drafted, it could be read to say that we're only doing it because of that. And that, that was the concern I had when I first saw it. I understand the point you're making, it's a valid one, but just, in terms of the language, in response, we're doing this. When presumably, we would have done that, at some point, we would have realized the value of this, even if it hadn't happened at Jewel. That would be, I'm not fine with it either way, to be honest. I, I think taking it out doesn't damage the importance of the resolution, but I, but I agree with what Russ has said as well. So I guess I'm kind of in the middle.
All right, well, Tom, I'm gonna put you in the positive, unless you tell me no. Okay, so it sounds like the majority of the board agrees to keep what we have in, for all the reasons everybody talked about, which I think is appropriate. So with that, I would welcome, if you don't mind, trustee Bachner welcoming trustee Jones to our meeting. If, if there's anything you'd like to address our village board with, again, welcome to our meeting. I don't know if we can hear you. Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. I, I want to say how honored I am to, to be here with you all. One, I want to extend greetings from the Village of Maywood, mayor Edwina Perkins, and the Board of Trustees. You know, I, I like to say that the comments that I make now aren't on behalf of the board as an entity, you know, they're gonna be my personal comments, and that I, you only have one vote, that you guys know. We have a similar form of government, so, you know, there's six other voices that are gonna need to be heard, and so therefore, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entity as far as the Board of Trustees of Maywood. I do want to make some comments. First, you know, maybe I'll just, I'll just introduce myself a little bit. My name is Miguel Jones, born and raised in Maywood, born at Loyola Hospital. You know, I've been in Maywood pretty much my entire life, aside from going to school, and I went to school in Illinois. I graduated from Wall Street Lutheran in Merrill's Park. My first job ever was at Concordia University as a, as a summer help cleaning up the dorms. And so I've had a, actually, a, a great experience in, in River Forest, and, you know, I would, I want to extend that through both communities, the experience that, that I had. So, kind of how I got here. So I want to kind of take a step back and, and say, you know, back in October, I believe, or, or November, I, I was able to attend a National League of Cities conference, and the new, I guess, National League of Cities president, he's a Los Angeles council member, I believe, I believe his name is Joe Luciani. Anyway, he, he gave a speech to local leaders, and his spiel, his spiel was to lead with a sense of urgency, especially when the narrative of division is so, just so, just in our face. And so that's kind of where my energy came from. And if you don't mind, I'm gonna affectionately refer to River Forest sometimes as neighbor, because that's effectively what we are. And so, and that's the energy in which I'm coming from. And just as, you know, as neighbors, when something happens like this, you know, what our response is. And, you know, I want to say this covenant is a relationship, partnership-based covenant. And, you know, the conversations that are gonna be driven from this, and the partnerships that are gonna be driven from, from this, are kind of fueled by those, you know, kind of three pillars of humanity, equity, and inclusion. So I would like to say, you know, I'm very proud of the response by the Village of River Forest, the residents, and the Board of Trustees. You know, I'm big on imagery, and I think, you know, the image of president Aduci and the, and the, and the Board of Trustees, you know, not only holding the Black Lives Matter flag, or, you know, banner, and walking with us, is truly historic. And, and let me tell you, you know, when, when we're looking back at this, our kids and grandkids will be proud of us, because they're gonna ask what we did, and on what side of history we were on this, and it's gonna be well documented. And so I want to be, I want to speak very proudly about how I responded to this, and that I did lead with urgency. I, I did want to make a couple more comments before I turn it over. I really want to be here just for comment. So I, I did want to address, you know, a couple things of kind of how I got here. So we know, you know, I drafted this June 8, and this was in response to the, you know, older woman that came up to me and made this comment, and I feel like, you know, outside of an elected official, I'm sure with Father's Day just coming up, us as men, I'm kind of speaking to the men here, what our responsibility is to protect the women in our community. And, you know, I felt like it was my responsibility, when something like that, you know, like that happens for me to speak up, otherwise, you know, what am I here for, right? So, you know, that's where, where that came from. But, you know, I did want to say, you know, as far as, you know, I have heard some concerns as it relates to, you know, have we vetted this? So within the past eight days, or I'm sorry, since June 8, you know, this has been, you know, not only has the River Forest Board been aware of it, the Maywood Board has been aware of it, I've talked to state officials, you know, county officials, they've given their feedback. I do understand that, you know, residents are gonna want to share their feedback, but I, I try to think of a practical expedient as it relates to understanding if this is good public policy. And so some of the feedback that I've gotten, you know, even from the River Forest, you know, officials, you know, I have to say really warmed my, my heart, I mean, and especially from the residents as well. So, you know, I'm very proud of our villages up to this point. This is truly historic, you know, don't, don't discount what's happening right now. And, you know, this response, people are not gonna be prepared, no, I shouldn't say prepared for, but we're gonna, we're gonna shock our communities, and we're gonna shock the Chicagoland area, and we're gonna redefine what happens, or, or what River Forest, the Maywood, and the Providence Township, and River Forest, and Oak Park Township looks and feels like. So I'm really excited about that. You know, I think, I also want to say, you know, this is gonna be an opportunity for us to rebrand, you know? Outside of just our communities, you know, we're, we're dealing with a lot of pandemics, you know, COVID-19, racism. But, you know, we're also in a opportunity where technology and globalization is gonna impact everybody, and I think we need to tackle that together. You know, jobs are gonna change, and how, how our economies are gonna change. I just think we need to bring some about those things together. Affordable housing is gonna be even more important as, you know, our working class is gonna be defined differently. And so that's gonna impact all of us. And, you know, I truly just believe, you know, my last comment is that, you know, I feel like there's a thin line between, you know, kind of being patriotic, being a nationalist. And, you know, I think what folks are doing with protesting and, and, excuse me, and marching, is truly patriotic. And we're, we're not blinded by a flag, you know, we stand on those principles, and we're not blinded by symbolism, but, you know, we're, we're gonna do something that's substantive. So I believe that racism, you know, the root of it, the byproduct, byproduct of it is hate and ignorance, but it's really rooted in self-interest. And I think what we're saying here is that we're gonna take, it's not about us and the village, it's about our communities. And, you know, here's our response to, when someone does hate in our community, this is our response, and it's more than a sorry. We're gonna make our systems not work for racism. You know, that's, that's what I believe my, my role is. So again, thank you for the time. It's been a, an honor to talk in front of you all, and I'm here for any questions, but, you know, again, I'm, I'm very proud of the Village of River Forest and their residents. You know, my, my grandmother told me that she knows for a fact, you know, being a part of marches in the 60s, that that reception would have been a little different 40 and 50 years ago, and how nervous actually she was, and the anxiety that she had walking over that bridge. And so, you know, again, this, you know, this, this is bigger than us, and I, I think hopefully that we can create a template that maybe even the city of Chicago could use, and, and other communities, on how, if you partner, how you can address issues. But it's really, you know, you have to say, hey, we need to have a relationship first. So neighbors, I appreciate you hearing me out, but this, this is a cry out for help, and let's do this together. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you trustee Jones, very much, on behalf of the Village of River Forest. We are proud that we will adopt this covenant, and we are proud to stand by you, and with you, and for you, as we not only march over that bridge, but as we march everywhere, hand in hand, with our neighbors, Village of Maywood. So it is honor, my honor. As soon as, as you know, when you sent this to me, I don't think it took me more than two minutes to say, yeah, we've got to do this, and it's got to be now. So thank you for bringing this to us, and thank you for being here, and thank you for giving this, us an opportunity to have this conversation. So I don't know if anybody else has any comments or questions for trustee Jones before we take the vote? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to.
I actually, no, I was.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Patty.
I was giving people a second.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you. Hate this. Go ahead.
You know, I typically have something to say, right? So I was giving people a second. I just wanted to share some thoughts, and again, I want to share my appreciation for trustee Jones bringing this up, and I also want to thank him. He and I have had a number of conversations over the last several days that I have been so appreciative that he's taken the time and willingness to talk through this. They've been energizing conversations, they've been hopeful conversations. We seem to see eye to eye on so many things of how we'd like to see things change on a bigger scope. After having the initial conversation and hearing this idea, I had further conversations with all sorts of people, other leaders in our community, other residents, and each conversation was, again, energized with ideas and possibilities, and the, the fact that this does go beyond just those five points. I mean, in the course of conversations, I see this as, these five items are a, for instance, here are ways that we can work together, and here's things that we can visualize to think about what we're going to do with this covenant. It's not at all an end-all, be-all, that these are the only items. I would actually like to encourage residents and anybody who hears about this resolution to get creative. to get creative, to get their wheels turning and to think about the things that they're passionate about and how they might be able to incorporate and build on relationships with folks in Maywood. For instance, one very simple idea in the course of conversations was, you know, we do our displays river cleanup for Earth Day.
Hmm.
We could perhaps look at, let's invite Maywood to join us on that event. Let's talk to the Forest Conservator to see about having a celebration after that event with both of our villages as a way to have these interactions with people. Another resident threw out a suggestion of a 5K after the Walk on Washington. Her wheels are turning, right? I mean, I think there are literally endless opportunities of things that we could do to build big and small, things that we can do with little to no planning and no financial commitment to big, like infrastructure or things that would take a lot of planning and financing, but in order to get to bigger ideas, more impactful ideas for a community like Maywood, we have to start having these relationships and these opportunities to build relationships and have the conversations around what can we do to help all of us for the benefit of all of us. So I personally would like to see that, um, we do as much as we can to foster this. I personally would like to see, I don't know what the plan is, what your thought was, Kathy, on after we voting on this, what our next steps would be. I would like to see that we have concrete next steps to really see that we are moving these action items, um, in terms of some sort of commissioner, task force, um, and, and to be able to look at where we can further, um, memorialize that we would like to do this. And so I'm just gonna throw out that one area that I feel we could do that because again, our board is gonna change over time, right? Just because we all recognize today the importance of this resolution, um, over time, our board, the Maywood Board, it's all gonna change. So I would make the recommendation to, um, Trustee Jones as well to consider, um, looking at a way to memorialize this just beyond the resolution itself so that it's looked at other ways. Um, in our comprehensive plan, we very much call out the idea of different partnerships. And actually, if you look on our page, um, 101 of our comprehensive plans, we very much have a section that says develop and maintain partnerships and Maywood, Village of Maywood is certainly included on that, which is a good thing. Um, so it is there to a certain extent, but I think we could, um, bolster this a little bit on page 102 of our comp plan, reviewing and updating the plan. And the first paragraph says, "It is important to emphasize that the comprehensive plan is not a static document. If community attitudes change or new issues arise that are beyond the scope of the current plan, the plan should be revised and updated accordingly." I'm not saying 100% we don't need to discuss and decide anything right now, I'm just throwing it out there, that here's an opportunity for us to be able to memorialize, put some narrative around why we want to have this relationship, different perhaps than even our other neighboring communities, right? I mean, I see this personally as, this is not the same as let's look at our neighboring communities and see where we can save money for the village, because that's of course a good thing and we do that all the time, right? This to me is very much different, um, of why this resolution, this covenant with this community at this time is different. And I think it needs to be treated differently. And so that's why I would like to, um, throw out there for people to consider the possibility of even updating our comprehensive plan to reflect this. Um, but anyhow, that's, I very much support this and I very much want our residents to be thinking of Maywood in their forefront when we plan whatever it is we're talking about, big or small.
Yep. Thanks, Patty. Okay. Anybody else? Um, okay, before we go to the vote, um, just to address, I know there's some logistics. So I know the Village of Maywood is not meeting until sometime in July, is that correct, Miguel?
Uh, that is correct.
Yep. And so once Eric and I kind of chatted a little bit about this, so once you, um, uh, and your elected officials, um, support and approve this, then, um, obviously the immediate next step would be certainly to sit down with you and, um, and Mayor Perkins and whoever and begin to think about how we, one, celebrate it, um, and, and, you know, signing it and celebrating it and then, as Trustee Hennig said, start memorializing it. And so, um, so, um, I think that's logistically the next, kind of the next process. So with that, I'd like, uh, to have Lisa, please take the vote, please.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
I am proud, honored and super excited to say yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
President, oh, nope, we don't have-
Yeah, I, go ahead and call me.
President Aduci.
Yes, yes. Okay, thank you for, uh, for that. Okay. Miguel, we're gonna move on to the next item, so thank you so much. You're, you know, you can stay and join our board meeting or you can go home and enjoy your family. It's up to you.
Uh, well, I, I'm already home, uh, in, in my son's room, it's also my office, so I'm gonna, uh, you know, spend some time with him, but thank you all again. Uh, if, if this is any, uh, what's happening now from some of the conversations that I've had, if this is any indication of the type of relationship building that we're gonna have, uh, I mean, this, this is gonna be amazing and I look forward to talk to you guys more. And I'm especially actually interested and excited to work with, uh, Village Administrator Palm as well. Um, you know, I've, 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 I've kind of looked him up and, uh, you know, I'm an accounting guy and I, I-
There he is.
I know, uh, the Village of River Forest has an award-winning, um, you know, kind of financial budgeting-
Yeah.
-um, you know, area, so-
Rosie.
I'm really excited to work with you all. So again, thank you very much. I will, uh, get out of your hair, but, uh, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, let's, uh, move on to then, uh, the 4C. There's no action here, but, um, um, I know I, I kind of caught Trustee Wagner off guard last, uh, meaning by, uh, proposing the proclamation, although I think you loved it, it was like you wanted, you wanted to know about it. So I apologize for that and so we're gonna, uh, rewrote, rewrote it just slightly to add a few things that I think was necessary. Um, so the proclamation is the same, I'd be happy to reread it if you, let me do that. Um, so this is, uh, the proclamation designating June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. And it goes on, it says, "Whereas the Village of River Forest supports the rights of every citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas all people regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the Village of River Forest accepts and welcomes people of diverse backgrounds and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community. And whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the Village of River Forest. And whereas while we as a society at large are slowly embracing new definitions of sexuality and gender, we must also acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice." So now therefore I, Catherine Aducy, Village President of the Village of River Forest, do hereby proclaim June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer plus Pride Month in the Village of River Forest, Illinois, and encourage our residents to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the LGBTQ plus face and celebrate the contributions that enhance our village. I have here to set by hand officially and cause to be affixed the seal of the Village of River Forest this, uh, day, um, eighth day of June, which was last time. So, um, no action, I don't know if there's any comments. I'm really, really super proud of us, uh, proclaiming this, um, so I'm super proud. And, um- Erica? I'll let you make any comments if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, just thank you again, uh, President Aduci for, um, for putting this forth and, um, this is again, just another step in recognition and contribution, um, of the LGBTQ plus, um, communities in River Forest. And, um, you know, it's interesting that this is happening now in June where, um, we, the, the, um, we talk about June being Pride Month and the reality is, is that, um, we celebrate pride in June, um, and it was a protest for, of black and brown, um, trans and queer communities, um, fighting for their rights. And I think that there is, um, and that's how pride started. So we can, you know, today we see the marches and the, you know, pride and the rainbow, but there was struggle-
Yeah.
-that, um, happened to get to that point. And, um, and we can see how the intersection between the LGBT community, brown and black folks, um, uh, and the struggle continues, um, but we can, you know, this is, this is a moment of celebration as well. And I think that we have seen both sides of that, um, this, uh, June in particular. So I am thoroughly proud of this and as, uh, somebody who is part of the LGBTQ plus community and, um, and who has family in it and friends, um, thankful for this and that we are, um, at this point.
And I'd like to add, I mean, go ahead, Res.
Res, I was just gonna add, talk about a historical moment, uh, for this month on this issue, also, uh, the US Supreme Court, when it came down to this decision in favor of LGBTQ, uh, their rights and, um, and, and not being able to discriminate against them any longer. So, uh, I think that just added to a history moment, uh, for this country, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Hearing no other further comments, uh, the one, one thing that Eric and I did talk about is, um, um, not currently, but sometime in the near future to talk about a flag policy. Um, and, um, so I, I want to acknowledge that publicly that, uh, we will work on that, Erica. Um, that's my promise to you. Okay, so, uh-
Are we voting on this?
No, 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 it's just that-
Are we voting on this?
No, no vote. But if you want to say something, no, it's just a proclamation that I, I've signed. So, I mean-
Okay, well-
We can vote on it if you like, but there's no vote.
Yeah, yeah, no, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
But then, so then I did want to say, um, thank you to Trustee Bachner for, um, suggesting this and bringing this forward. Um, I think it is, I would agree with the comments that would make, were made and the importance of doing this. Um, I also want to thank Trustee Bachner for giving some of that historical context around, um, Pride Month. I think that's important for people to hear. Um, and as the goddaughter of the former president of Oak Parks P Flag, which is a support, um, organization that supports, um, LGBTQ plus, um, individuals and their families, um, I very much am proud that our community, um, is supporting this and thank you for that. Thank you for this proclamation, Kathy.
It's the right thing to do. Okay, so, uh, we're only half, quarter through our agenda, so let's, uh, move on to the consent agenda. If I can get a motion to approve, uh, 5A through E in a second?
I motion, we approve the consent agenda items A through E.
I'll second. Patty?
Okay, Patty, um, yeah, okay, very good. Thank you very much. Um, okay, any comments or questions on, um, that consent agenda? Hearing none?
Which motion, Patty, which motion of the minutes are we approving?
I'm sorry?
Which version of the minutes are we approving?
I think the last version that was sent out, which had changes from Patty and I.
Can I get 48 hours notice?
I don't know, do we?
No, to change the agenda, you need 48 hours notice, but not the-
Not the minutes. I think only the agenda time, right?
Okay.
That's correct.
Correct.
If these meeting minutes for June 8th were on the agenda, but the contents of them changed within 48 hours, that's fine, they just have to be on the agenda within that time, which they were.
Correct.
Okay. Okey dokey, so if I can get a, um-
Do you want me to read the agenda?
Yes, you need to read it.
Keep forgetting about that.
Uh, 5 consent agenda, A, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, June 8th, 2020. B, Village Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes, June 8th, 2020. C, Authorization to Sell Surplus Property, 2006 Ford F-350 Super Duty Truck Ordinance. D, Financial Report, May 2020. E, Village Administrators Report. Want me to take it off? Yes, please. All right. Trustee Cargie?
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez?
Stepped away from his desk for a moment.
Whoa, whoa. Trustee Brennan?
Okay.
Oh, Katie, I think your mic is off.
There she is.
There we go. Oh.
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Hennig?
Yes.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Um, moving on to 7A, this is the Recommendations of Boards, Commissions, and Committees. If I can get a motion, this is the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance regarding home baking operations. If I can get-
I move to approve an ordinance amending the Village of River Forest zoning ordinance regarding home baking operations.
I'll second.
Okay, um, is there, Lisa, do you want to, uh, review it a little bit with the trustees? Is it just a high light? I know it's fairly detailed in our packet, but-
I'll keep it brief.
Okay.
I'll do my best to keep it brief. Uh, so right now, within the village's code, you are allowed to have a home occupation in the, uh, residential zoning districts. Home occupations are prohibited in the commercial zoning districts and in the ORIC and PRI districts. Uh, currently though, within the definition of home occupation, anything related to home kitchen or baking operations is considered a special use. So the village board petitioned the zoning board of appeals to conduct a public hearing to, uh, potentially amend the zoning ordinance that would allow home kitchen operations as a permitted use within these zoning districts. There is no need to update the land use charts since they are already permitted districts, it just simply modifies the definition of home kitchen, or of home occupation, excuse me, to incorporate home kitchen occupation as a permitted use. I would also note in the memo that there are several conditions applicable already to home occupations within that definition. And so many of the conditions that you would have otherwise imposed potentially through a special use permit are already built into that definition of home occupation. So although a public hearing and neighbor input isn't required, uh, because it would no longer be a special use, um, there are protections built in for the residents, uh, within that definition. In addition to the ordinance that is before you for the text amendments, there is also another ordinance that modifies other provisions of the village code that would be applicable to home kitchen operations. And these are provisions that were reviewed by the village's sanitarian, she is a third-party consultant that we use to conduct our health inspections, by the village's attorney, and by the resident, Laura Riff, who had proposed this text amendment in the first place. And the effect of the changes is to, again, with the zoning ordinance, to allow these as a permitted use in the already, um, the, the zoning districts that already allow home occupations, but to also require that they register with the village on an annual basis, that we make a few modifications, um, to exempt them from the definition of food service establishment and bakery, so that no other fees are applicable, that we conduct, uh, inspections on a reactive basis. If they were food service establishments or bakeries, we would be having to do, uh, inspections on a proactive basis. Uh, and then it incorporates the limits, uh, in the state statute about what can be produced, uh, occupation, or excuse me, caps on monthly sales, et cetera. And, uh, it also establishes some provisions about what has to be provided when they register with the village. Uh, and I thought our food sanitarian did a really good job of just kind of summing up why she thinks that this is a good thing. The food business is a difficult business to break into and this gives people an opportunity to get their foot in the door and get started. Uh, and she feels, um, even as someone who is, um, very diligent about food sanitation regulations, she feels that the items that they're allowed to produce within the scope of the definition are all very safe items to produce. Um, there is a requirement for a certification, it is, um, an eight-hour training class, um, that our, uh, that our resident even took and recommended and our, our sanitation consultant recommended as well. So we, um, in requiring that can have some reassurance that the people who are doing this are educated about how to properly and safely handle food.
Okay, sounded like it was, uh, well received, very good. You're okay with that, Chief?
Okay.
Any questions for Lisa or the fire chief or Eric?
I do have a couple questions, just to clarify- I do have a couple of questions, just to clarify. So, the, the food handling, um, I see that's part of, so it's an annual fee to the license, or to the village, right? And then it's also proof that they've done this. Is, is that a certification that is renewed yearly, do you know? Or is it a one-time thing? Is there anything that they need to do to update that?
The certification is good for five years.
For five years, okay.
So, at the time that it expires, right, when they go to renew their business registration, they would have to prove up that they've, um, been recertified.
Okay, that that's current to the, okay. And then in terms of the, um, the state cap of a thousand dollars, and I, so I know that just following the state's, um, guideline already, is this more or less kind of on a, um, goodwill in terms of your, you know, you're just making the assumption that a resident would just stay within that? Is there a way that that would be monitored? You know what I mean, that they aren't exceeding that? We're just assuming that, you know what I mean? It's like, is it...
Yeah. It, it happens sometimes.
Yeah, I think we're on the honor system here. If we were to start getting complaints that people were coming in and out of the house at all hours, they were getting huge deliveries, you know, we would, we would use this as a mechanism to try to address it.
Okay.
But, at some point, and a thousand dollars, I don't know, maybe that is or is not arbitrary, um, but at some point, these things become restaurants. And that's really the purpose of that regulation, is to avoid something becoming an actual bakery or an actual food service establishment. It's, it's a line in the sand that you have to draw somewhere.
Yeah, no, I, I get it. Yeah, okay. I just didn't know in sense of, like, who would even potentially monitor it? It wouldn't be the, you know, it would be the state or the village. And I get it's difficult to do, but I understand what you're saying, though.
Lisa, are we collecting taxes then on the sales of these items?
They should be charging sales tax, yes. And if they're registering...
Depends where the point of sale is.
Okay.
Hmm, good question.
If it's an internet-based business, if somebody's coming to the home to pick up, yeah, that's a good point. If they're, so, the whole idea behind this is to give them an opportunity to go and sell at farmer's market, so that's a good point. If they're selling out of the home, and it's an internet business, internet-based transaction at the home, I would think that would come to the village. But if it is at a farmer's market, it would go to where the farmer's market is held.
Or if people are picking up at the, their home.
Right.
Right, right. If customers are coming to the property to pick it up, then the point of sale would be the property. If the goods were being shipped, then I believe it's at the recipient's address, much like internet sales are now being taxed correctly after the wafer decision from the United States Supreme Court and subsequent statutory amendments.
And that tax, even internet, then is our tax.
If a River Forest resident orders something from Amazon, regardless of where it's shipped from, the village gets the sales tax from that purchase, is my understanding.
Right.
Which is how the, the, the state of Illinois fixed its sales tax component.
So, in this case, if we are, if they're shipping out of their home to...
Then it would be, the tax would be collected by the recipients. If, if they're complying with the state law, my understanding is that it would be the recipient's address. I think part of that would be through use tax.
Use tax.
Greg, can I, this is Patty again. Greg, can I ask you, um, this doesn't exactly pertain to us, but if the resident is making to sell at a farmer's market, like, for instance, the Oak Park Farmer's Market, do those vendors pay taxes? And if so, does Oak Park get those taxes, or...
Should be. Should be.
Yes, I, I, I believe they should be paying tax in that, yes, the village is the point of sale. Uh, you measure the sales tax obligations in, in great part by where the point of sale occurs. There, obviously, the point of sale would be in the village of Oak Park.
Yeah, you're probably thinking, Patty, right? I mean, here, you can have a, a, a thing of butter and you pay, you know, a dollar. You know, you don't then say a dollar plus 10 cents. So, um, but they should pay taxes on the sale, the total sale of, right, what happened that day.
That's right. And we're, and we're talking relatively minuscule amounts of tax process.
No, 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 I know. Yeah, yeah.
But good question.
Yeah, typically, farmer's market organizers have agreements with their vendors about how those taxes are remitted.
Yeah. Okay. Any further questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. Um, Lisa, Chairman Martin seemed to, he was the only one who voted no on this in the commission, and he voted no because he thought this should be a special use permit rather than not requiring, essentially being a permitted use. Um, and I think his reasoning was that he thought a special use would get, would give added protection to neighbors who would, um, have the ability to, you know, weigh in on whether this is going to be a nuisance to them. And you mentioned just a couple of minutes ago that there's some additional protections for neighbors. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Within the definition of home occupation, let me just pull it up, give me one second to pull up the village code. So, the special use process, uh, in general, the intent is to sort of start at the notion of, yes, this is a, a use that we would typically permit within the village. However, the village may have an interest in installing some conditions to mitigate the potential impact of that use on surrounding property owners. And so, um, it could be things like hours of operation, um, lighting, parking, um, et cetera. And so, when you look at the definition, and I'm just about there, of home occupation, and let's see how well I can continue to talk and stall while I get there. Um, all right. So, in home occupations, uh, let's see, the, some of the examples of the restrictions are, uh, for example, item A, home occupations have to be conducted entirely within the dwelling unit. Uh, let's see, uh, no more than one person shall be employed other than a member of the family residing within the dwelling unit. No more than two clients or customers shall visit the premises at the same time, and no occasion any client or customer visit the premises between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Uh, no signs, activities, lighting, or display that will indicate from the exterior that the building is being used in part for any purpose other than that of a residential dwelling. Uh, moving on down to, uh, let's see, so it restricts, item G restricts the type of vehicles that can make deliveries to the home. Everything has to come through passenger motor vehicle. Uh, no deliveries by semi tractor, trailer truck, uh, are allowed for a home occupation. There's no noise, odor, dust, vibration, smoke, glare, television, or radio interference, fire hazard, or any other hazard emitting from the dwellings was to create a nuisance. It can't involve the use of noxious, toxic, or harmful chemicals, or on-site staging, displaying, or assembling of any commercial vehicles. Uh, let's see, it can't affect the fire rating of the dwelling. They can't alter the structure to accommodate the home occupation. Um, yeah, so there's, there's...
So, the question is, is why did he vote no?
Why did he vote no? He felt that there should be a public hearing to, um, address, but to give the neighbors an opportunity to come out and speak about potential impacts on their property. Um, and that was understood, but the other zoning members, particularly, uh, Mr. Smetana commented that he felt the restrictions, items A through T, and the definition of home occupation really covered what, um, we would typically try to install as conditions for a special use permit, that, that the def, that those protections are already built into the definition of home occupation. And quite frankly...
Is there any...
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is there any opportunity for neighbors to address concerns? Or is there a form for them to address any concerns that they might have?
Sure. Um, just like any code enforcement situation, they can contact the village if they believe that there is some sort of a problem, and we can inspect it. And if there is, uh, a violation of the rules regarding home occupations, we can make them bring their operations into compliance, um, or, um, face potential penalties through the village.
So, let me ask Katie, is your question, um, more along the lines of a, the neighbor knowing that there's going to be a bakery operation, a home bakery operation there, before it becomes one? Is that what you're trying to get to?
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand the difference between special use and not, and I think that, I think you've just identified it, is that they get notice in advance, but it, but under what we're voting on tonight, they, neighbors don't get advance notice, but they still have an opportunity to come before the village and, you know, um, make sure that their neighbors in compliance if they're not.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Um, any further comments, questions to Lisa? I'm hearing, uh, none, I don't think. Uh, I'd ask to, Lisa, to please take the vote.
Sure. Trustee Vasquez?
Yeah.
Okey dokey.
Trustee Brennan?
Yeah.
Trustee Hennick?
Yeah.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yes.
Trustee Cargie?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, before you, I have, uh, two appointments I'd like to make. Um, I'd like to make them together, if that's possible.
As long as the trustees are okay with it, you could, uh, someone could join them together. If anyone wants to vote separately, they have the right to have them split.
Okay. Unless somebody wants to split this. If I can get a motion to, to, um, move both of those motions, uh, for Jane McColl and Carrie McLean, and then I can talk a little bit about them?
Motion to concur with the recommendation of the village president to appoint Jane McColl to the plan commission to the remainder of the term expiring on 4/30/24, and to concur with the recommendation to appoint Carrie McLean to the sustainability commission to the remainder of the term expiring 4/30/22, uh, 4/30/2023.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I don't know, um, if anyone knows Jane McColl. Uh, she's, um, a great person in the community, uh, been here a long time, have family ties. I know her mother lives here. Um, so, she's just a great, uh, person, and she cares about this village. Um, and therefore, she's my appointment to, uh, the replacement for, uh, Blondie Kirk, who has done a great job for us. Um, and then, uh, Carrie McLean, um, I don't know her really well. I did talk to her over the phone. She's super excited to join the sustainability commission. Um, so, she will replace Andy Basni, who needed to step down due to, you know, just personal obligations. And so, I'm really, really, um, excited about these two appointments, um, and I hope, uh, you agree. If any questions, uh, either about Jane or Carrie, um, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'd ask Lisa to take the vote, please.
Sure. Trustee Brennan?
Yeah.
Trustee Hennick?
Yes, but if I could just quickly add a few points, um, again, to thank Elaine Kirk for all her time on, um, a number of our boards. You're right, Kathy, she has, um, contributed a lot and has been, um, an asset, I think, for the community, so I want to thank her for her work. Um, and I know both Jane and Carrie. I haven't seen Carrie in a long time, but she actually designed my current kitchen way back when, when we did our addition. So, um, I think they would both be a good addition to both of these, um, commissions. So, yeah.
Thanks, Patty. And just so you know, we will celebrate, uh, Elaine, Mrs. Kirk. Uh, she's awesome. So, thank you for, you know, saying that.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yeah.
Trustee Cargie?
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, great. Um, we're going to move on to, um, our new business. Uh, this is the discussion of the Affordable Housing Plan Action Matrix. Um, and I asked Eric to work with staff and, um, uh, other resources to come up with a plan, and I'll let, uh, let him, we have no, no motion here, so it's just in, just a informational, um, discussion. So, I'll let, uh, Eric go ahead and update the board.
Sure. So, in your packet, uh, you will find, uh, a matrix that takes the various items, recommendations, uh, from the Affordable Housing Plan, sets them in the matrix, then provides some next steps, um, looks at, uh, possibilities for, uh, input, and then gives a rough estimate, uh, on timing. So, the, the way we've looked at this is really taking these items and putting them into really three, uh, three buckets, and we'll talk about, and there's a couple of other items at the bottom there, too, that we'll talk about. But, uh, in terms of moving forward, the first two are somewhat inter, uh, interconnected as we're talking about initiatives, uh, programs, uh, et cetera, as relates to, um, affordable housing, existing affordable housing in town, and also as it interrelates to a possible TIF fund allocation, um, if that was a, a consideration. So, because we're talking about, um, various programs and initiatives, I see these two somewhat working, uh, hand in hand with one another. One related to the TIF and one, um, generally speaking, for the entire village. So, we'll look at those two collectively, and then, as again, we've, uh, we'll talk about, uh, input, you know, we've mentioned, at least internally, the EDC and the plan commission weighing in on those, and then starting to get input from outside organizations. So, some of the organizations that were brought up, actually during, uh, some of the public comments, uh, over the last, uh, meeting or so, uh, there's a group, uh, out of UIC, uh, Neighborhood and Community, um, the Voorhees Center of Neighborhood and Community Input, Community Improvement, I'm sorry. Uh, we have Housing Forward, we have the Oak Park Housing Authority, and certainly have Opportunity Knox. So, those are all groups we'll be, uh, staff will be reaching out to based on some of the feedback we heard, uh, from the last meeting. Uh, and then, from there, compile, uh, a series of, uh, policy recommendations, uh, for the board to, uh, consider, uh, ultimately, at the, at the end of the day. Uh, the third item talks about, uh, integrative support of housing. Uh, Mr. Lauber had made a comment earlier at the meeting about, um, you know, this may not include the, amending the zoning ordinance, uh, that, um, may, uh, may be true. Um, the village president and I did have a conversation, uh, with Phil Carmody, who's the executive director at Opportunity Knox. Uh, Phil had indicated to, uh, us on the phone, uh, that they have done a, a lot of work, uh, in this area, uh, and that he was more than happy to, uh, share all that, uh, with us, uh, to get that conversation started. So, to me, that's where that conversation, uh, ultimately begins, is with Opportunity Knox and better understanding, uh, their residential support initiative, um, uh, as we start to move forward. Uh, items four and five, uh, again, we've, uh, moved and put together, uh, as we're talking about, uh, amending the zoning code, the first being with, uh, accessory dwelling units, uh, and then the second point with, uh, standards, uh, as we talk about affordable housing, uh, in the, uh, zoning ordinance for plan development. So, I, moving forward, as we get into ADUs, you know, we're getting, starting to get into a, um, a, a technical zoning item that we're going to want some assistance on, uh, in terms of providing, um, consulting services. So, we would ask, uh, we would do an RFP and ask for a consultant to help, uh, manage these two items, uh, and, uh, shepherd those two along. And then, as you can see, we've, uh, named a series of other organizations that we would also want to get, uh, input from, uh, outside organizations. Uh, and then you can also see internal organizations, plan commission, ZBA, AH, AF stands for, um, age-friendly. And then again, the next step would be to, uh, seek, uh, technical assistance for, for that particular work. Uh, the last item, the last two items, um, really the zoning ordinance, you know, this is a larger discussion, and I think we mentioned this, this was mentioned at, in our discussions, that, um, you know, going and doing a comprehensive review of our zoning code certainly is something that, um, uh, is, will be ready to be undertaken at some point, uh, in the lens of just the zoning, our zoning code, bulk standards, et cetera, in general, land use, uh, and then also in the lens of affordable housing. I think I would recommend getting through items one through five first. That certainly is a lot of work to begin with, uh, but we would, uh, knock those items, uh, out and, uh, provide you those recommendations, um, uh, once we're done with those processes. And then, you would, and once all that was done, then I think you would look at a larger discussion about the zoning ordinance, and I wouldn't, uh, even with, uh, many of the initiatives that we have on our plate right now, that we would even tackle that till next fiscal year. And then, the last item is just kind of an ongoing item, uh, that came up during, uh, the conversations about just doing a better job at tracking metrics as relates to affordable housing units, uh, and just, uh, housing starts in general, uh, items coming on, items coming off, uh, et cetera, and working to develop, um, a better system for that. So, that will be going on, um, as we move along. So, I wanted to share that with you, let you know that we'll be, uh, starting this work, um, uh, soon, and, uh, certainly answer any questions you might have.
Uh, I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Eric. I mean, I think this is good that we have some action items in place, that we are, in fact, moving forward on some stuff. But a couple of things, just to kind of clarify, um, the point that Dan Lauber raised as far as integrated housing, and he seemed to include the fact that that goes beyond, um, what Phil is perhaps pursuing for his, um, participants with Opportunity Knox, anybody with disabilities. Um, so, well, how does that, how do the, the other areas around... So will, how does that, how do the other areas around that idea of integrated housing, will that, are the other groups that you have looking at this be able to address that? Or?
Yeah, I, I think the conversation, based on my conversation with Phil, the conversation would start with him. I don't think it would end with him necessarily, and I will be looking to him for additional guidance and additional organizations that he would suggest in that regard. Certainly, we can rely on the ones that I mentioned in items one and two as well. But if there are other groups in addition to that, we're certainly happy to reach out to those groups.
Okay, yeah, I don't even mean specifically for Phil. I mean specifically to, the different, that Dan Lauber seemed to bring up, that integrated housing meant different things, that seemed to be a broader definition of integrated housing. That was my point.
No, other than just disability, mental and physical disability, it's broader.
Sure. So in, in, it's a fair point, and so I'm happy to, to the extent there are other organizations that we can include, that are part of a larger nut, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, I think starting with Opportunity Knox, Patty, and then, I mean, that's going to be a broader conversation with the board, you know, as to, you know, what, how broad or narrow that you, that we want it to be. But addressing, I think, what the plan commission intent was, and was what Phil had given them, and it centered primarily around the physical and mental disability, the families of, of physical and mental disabled families, so.
Right, no, I understand that. I just personally don't, you know, I'm not familiar with what all that means around integrated housing, so I want to be sure that we're, okay. And then in terms of when you talk about getting technical assistance from a third-party consultant, who are you talking about in terms of what sort of consultant, what sort of experience, expertise, something like, are we talking to somebody similar, like John's experience, expertise, a different company, something totally separate than what we've had before? What does that look like?
Yeah, no, I think we would be going and doing a request for proposal to see what's out there and see what, what other firms respond to that, that have, you know, technical expertise in that area. And so, you know, we would cast a pretty wide net and see what we, you know, see what we get in terms of a response, and then ultimately, the village board has to, I mean, I'll make the assumption that the contract will probably be over $20,000. And so that would come back to you for approval.
That answered one of my other questions. I had a question about budget. But so again, just to clarify, you're talking to somebody that has a company that is an urban planner or city planner, that type of consultant?
Yeah.
Thinking that arena.
Yeah, in that, in that.
Yeah.
In that universe, yes.
Hey, Eric, isn't this, I mean, aren't there a number of kind of community-based organizations who have done this kind of work that, you know, you know, not to be cheap, and not that we don't want to pay a consultant, but I mean, it seems like there's, you know, you know, people who, municipalities who work with group home organizations and, you know, get learnings from those types of organizations and bring those back, and then find out what kind of consultancy they use from that. Is, is that part of the plan?
It almost has to be, because how are you going to?
Yeah, I mean, certainly, well, we can reach out to other, other groups and other agencies. I think the reason I think having, but going and making sure we go to the outside and bring in a consultant being important is because I think the other wrinkle, if you will, in River Forest is the fact that we have two universities in town. And so I think that may, you know, provide just an additional consideration for us that we just have to think through as we work through this and be thoughtful about that.
Good question.
I guess, could you expand on that? Well, I don't, I guess I don't understand the, the connection to the universities specifically.
Well, I, we are looking to make, I think the intent of the board and the plan commission is to take ADUs as a way to increase affordability, exactly how that plays out and how we, you know, set this up.
So meaning that perhaps we would put parameters around? I'm not saying this is, but is this what, are you saying these are things we have to consider, that we may have to put parameters around who perhaps has an ADU, and to put parameters around who could live in it?
I don't know what I don't know. I just know.
But I mean, is that, is that essentially what you're saying, we have to be thinking about perhaps?
Yeah, exactly. And that's where I'm just concerned, not, again, I'm not overly concerned, but I just, I'm concerned that we would go ahead and adopt legis, legislation. And I guess I'm more concerned, trustee Hennick, about the unintended consequence, that if we don't think about it, and all of a sudden, these ADUs become more, they're all geared to student housing, and people are, you know, taking these and flipping them so that they can rent them out and make money. Again, we just have to be thoughtful about it.
Versus, I think another, you know, one of the things that the plan commission clearly gave us direction on is, you know, finding, using the ADUs as a means for fixed income, seniors on fixed income, could be possibly the ADUs for obviously those, the teachers, the firefighters, those that are on a modest income. And, and those, those are what it should be directed toward, not, not just student housing. I think that's what you're trying to say, because there's a broader group of families that we'd like to see encouraged to live in River Forest.
Yeah, no, I hear that. And I, and I actually, I, for sure, we don't want to have any unintended consequences. That's why we want to have as broad a conversations as we can to consider all potential contingencies, right? But I guess I do, it does concern me a bit that, you know, we're going to have to be careful around, I think, what the parameters are and what they might look like. I mean, that's going to be, we're going to have to think hard on that one.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of conversation we got to have. You might say, no, keep it open, do whatever you want. That's okay, too. I just, I think Eric is just trying to give you the kind of.
No, I got it, fair enough, and it's a good, yeah.
Well, one point of discussion I'm thinking of is there's the A, Airbnb's or whatever that are going around. I know even before this issue came up, I know we were hearing rumors that maybe some residents are allowing that, and the issues that has caused. So I mean, just a point of discussion in terms of, you know, that people aren't building them just to make money for the Airbnb's type of situation, that's all.
We had that text amendment for short-term rentals a few years ago that limits it, that any, any residential structure, yeah, there's a minimum 30-day rental to try to avoid those Airbnb issues.
The Airbnbs. I don't know if you heard that, Rez, but we did, when did we do it, like?
Couple of years ago.
Two years ago. Where we restricted Airbnbs, that we prohibited, basically, right?
Okay, and I just want to make sure, will that, do we need to incorporate like the ADUs as part of that? And just food for thought, that's something, I don't know.
Yeah, right. I mean, lots of food for thought, so. Good point, good, good, good discussion. Lot more to come. This is the tip of the iceberg, and, and I think one of the reasons, you know, this was important to move forward, because there's a lot of work, as you could see, in each one of these areas, and it's not easy, and it's, takes time. So, okay, real good. Thank you, Eric. And, yeah, Lisa, go ahead.
One issue I, I noticed, and I just, we have an opportunity to go back and clean it up. The text amendment and the motion that the board made for, with regard to the home kitchen operations, the motion that was made to, was to approve the ordinance adopting the zoning ordinance changes. There were two ordinances presented to you. One was for the zoning ordinance changes, and one was separate because it dealt with the rest of the provisions of the code. And so the board has approved the ordinance adopting the zoning changes, but not the other changes. So since we're still at the meeting, we can clean that up and make sure it gets all done.
Okay, so you need a motion?
I need a motion. Let me go back to that.
She, I, Lisa, is it the motion to approve an ordinance amending the River Forest Village Code regarding the regulation of home kitchen operations?
That's the wiry one.
Okay, so I move that.
Okay.
Thanks, Rez.
Take a second?
I'll, second.
Okay. Any discussion or comments on, on that? Thanks for the catch. If hearing none, if I can ask, Lisa, go ahead and take that vote. Trustee Cargi?
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yeah.
Trustee Brennan?
Yeah.
Trustee Hennick?
Yeah.
Trustee O'Connell?
Yes.
Trustee Bachner?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to 9B, which is the approval of the execution of.
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just make one comment on the Affordable Housing and Planation Plan?
Yes.
So one thing that I mentioned to Kathy earlier today was.
Miss it.
In terms of third-party organizations, whether they're consulting paid or not, I would love to be able to just make sure that if they have the opportunity and wherewithal and want to provide us with further opportunities around affordable housing plans and ideas, that that is, that that is not cut short, so that we allow them the scope to be able to give us other recommendations as they see fit. You know, and that's not something, you know, because we talked about like the Affordable Housing Plan meeting a minimum requirement. So, you know, to the, to the extent that they're talking with Eric or the staff or one of us and bring up other ideas and opportunities, that we don't.
Shut them down, shut them down.
Tap that down.
All right. Yeah, sorry, I forgot to mention them, Erica, so. Okay, um, okay, now we're moving on to 9B. This is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an automated traffic law enforcement agreement with ATS Inc., which is DBA. Is DBA their name?
Yeah, their parent company is American Traffic Solutions. They're doing business as Vera Mobility.
Oh, doing business as Vera Mobility.
Kathy, I, this Patty, I just wanted to say that I wouldn't mind having the motion to start the discussion on this, but I know personally, I have a number of questions, and in part, it was that I wanted some more information that I had asked for in an email on Friday, and I, I was, I thank Eric for providing some of that this afternoon, but haven't really had the opportunity to totally review all of that and for to think about some questions. So I would like to make the motion and recommendation that we discuss this, but table the vote till the 13th.
Well, I mean, we sent an RFP out, which was discussed at the board table, and we agreed that we would send the RFP out. So this is the result of the RFP, and we gave staff authorization. All right, but that's what we did. I mean, we gave authorization to negotiate a contract from that RFP, and this is what's before you. So if you've got questions on the particular contract, I think we've got a representative from Vera Mobility, certainly we'll talk through that, or you can certainly ask Eric. But I think, you know, the, the discussion of, you know, red light cameras, period, I think have been, have been discussed. So I'd like to see you get a motion, and then we can talk about it.
Well, I guess I don't, well, if I could just say, before a motion is called, I guess, yes, we talked about the idea about going out to RFP many months ago, and I know there was some question around what are red light cameras going to look like in general, what's the state going to perhaps come back with in terms of red light cameras, allowing them or not allowing them. We never really, I don't think, had the, because there were still some, perhaps some questions on that in general, that idea. But the one thing I'm going to come back to, I guess, as far as my comments in the opening of the meeting, is that in light of everything going on in this current climate, and the need, I believe, to look at things through a different lens, this is an area that I feel like we have to look through this different lens. And so I know when I ran my campaign, this question about red lights, cameras came up a lot, and obviously, hearing different takes on people's perspective of red light cameras, I absolutely appreciate that it's presented in terms of a safety piece. I also recognize it's absolutely a light item on our budget. I don't think anybody can deny that's not a fact, because it is, and that's a big part of, that's a big consideration in terms of whether or not we were to move forward with the red light cameras. But I guess for me personally, in light of all of our current climate, in light of even at the time of the conversation around the RFP, recognizing that there are other communities who have had red light cameras, have opted to no longer have them, so I've obviously been able to address their budget holes, right, in terms of not having them any longer, in light of just the questions, the whole reporting that went on with the Wednesday Journal around red light cameras. But just quickly being able to look at the data that Eric was able to provide this afternoon raises some concerns and questions for me in terms of, if I can find the, in particular around the stats on.
Isn't this part of the discussion after we make a motion, I think?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Well, no, yes and no, Bob, I mean, here's the thing, so yes and no. I'm not saying at this point it's an absolute up or down. What I'm suggesting as my motion is that we take the time to have some conversation around red light cameras, perhaps even this plan, having some questions answered, being able for people to have the opportunity to digest the stats and further information that came out to everybody this afternoon, but then table the vote until July 13th. So I'm not saying that, you know, we can't move forward on this conversation. I'm saying, let's have the discussion around, and I wanted to make a point about why I'm further looking through this at a different lens right now, and I would like others to consider this before we move to a vote. That's the motion I would like to make.
Eric, when does our contract end, with the other red light?
June 30th.
It's already, so.
I would like to make, make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of an automated tra, traffic law enforcement agreement with American Traffic Solutions Inc. doing business as Vera Mobility.
Second.
Okay, so right now, I'm going to recuse myself on an abundance of caution. I have a few family members that actually lobby for a automated traffic law enforcement. It is not this company, so I want to make sure that's clear. But in abundance of caution, I am going to step out of this discussion and let you all discuss it.
All right. With that, I'll just provide just a quick overview. The village did go to RFP on this matter, as we had indicated back in February, when it was the decision to not renew the contract with the existing vendor. And so we went and got three proposals. Technically speaking, many of the proposals are fairly similar to one another in terms of the technology they provide, and then essentially, we're looking at a turnkey solution that the village, with the exception of reviewing the violations, isn't really doing a lot of the heavy lifting, that it's all provided by the, by the contracted vendor. So as you see in the, in the cover memo of the three proposals that were received, Vera provides the most cost-effective, cost-efficient proposal to the village of River Forest. They, their model is based more in for a fee for service. It's almost as though we're licensing the technology on a monthly basis. There's no per-ticket fee that is assessed, like our current vendor. And then in addition to that, you know, with Redspeed and GAZO, the other two companies that provided, they follow more the traditional model of taking a per-ticket fee on their, on their revenue. And so as you can see in the proposal and in the chart, there is a substantial difference in revenue. And with that, we're recommending the, the contract with Vera. We have reviewed the work of the company with other Illinois municipalities, received favorable responses. The agreement, the contract itself was reviewed and approved by the village attorney, and I'm pleased that some of the language that we negotiated. and I'm pleased that some of the language that we negotiated in that agreement is better off than where we were with our existing provider. So, that's the main overview. The contents, the program will not change. You know, the one comment I would make, trustee Hennick had mentioned about looking at things through a different lens. Now, one thing I would offer that I think often gets overlooked with our program, and I don't think it's done intentionally, because people are typically focused on the vehicle interactions and the vehicle tickets. Number one, if you look at the overall traffic volume on North and on Harlem at both intersections, the amount of tickets that we issue versus the average daily traffic counts is very small in percentage. So, when people write articles and often say, well, these, this amount of tickets are being issued, or this amount of revenue is being issued, it's really not in context of anything, right? It's just, oh yeah, if I had that amount of money in my checking account, that's certainly a lot of money. But if you compare it against how much traffic is on those roadways on a daily basis, it's really, it's less than 1%, right? But the other thing I would point out, as we look at things in different lenses, the lens that I would even look through at both intersections, and especially at Lake and Harlem, is there's a considerable amount of pedestrians in that area, right? And those are not people that are going on the Frank Lloyd Wright tour, right? They're people who are picking up bus service, they're commuting from the Green Line or the Metro, or they're just traversing, you know, to get to where they need to go. And I have personally stood out there, especially at Lake and Harlem, and at any given time, there's a considerable amount of people going up and down in the street, folks that are commuting by foot, or catching public transportation to get to where they need to go. So, that would just be the only other thing, I'm not trying to read your mind, trustee Hennick, but certainly, as you mentioned, that that would be one thing that I would just offer up as a consideration, that I don't think, people really don't talk about, because they get hyper-focused, maybe just in the vehicles and the tickets and all those other things. So, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, if I could further then expand on what I was gonna say, looking through things in a different lens. I'm sure it's been clear these last three years that I'm a data person, right? And I like to, so I hear you on one hand, that you can't get hyper-focused in one sense, but to a certain degree, you do have to look at the data on things. And so, like I said, I was only able to quickly do it with the information that was provided, which then brings me to more questions that I know aren't gonna be able to be provided tonight, because in part, it has to do with some of the crash data that you had mentioned in your email, that you weren't able to provide the specific accident information. But there's a piece under the chart that you gave us for citations and contested citations. I had asked what number of citations that are contested get dismissed. And when you look at the numbers in the chart for 2020, that there were 245 total contested and 169 dismissed. That's almost 70% of those being dismissed. And when you look at past years, there might be a smaller percentage in comparison to the total number of contested citations, but in each case, there's over 200 people who had their citation dismissed after contesting it. And I guess my concern with this is that you're talking about people having to take time out of their schedule, perhaps taking time off of work, leaving work, to come and contest a ticket that ends up getting dismissed, which means it was a ticket that they perhaps didn't deserve getting. And so, my concern then is, what about those folks that can't afford to take off work or have the time to come in and contest that, right? What about the folks who, because they don't have that ability, either A, go ahead and just pay the ticket essentially unfairly, because they didn't need to, or B, don't pay the ticket, but now they're getting a second notice, and then they're getting further action taken as far as being put on, to a collection agency, which is perhaps going to impact their credit, which means impacting more broadly what they're able to do in terms of purchasing a home or making other decisions, getting a loan for school. This is the piece of where I'm talking about, looking at it from a different lens. When I also had one of my questions in the email was to get a sense of who's getting these tickets, and I specifically had said in regards to resident, non-resident, but, you know, it begs in this current climate, who ends up also being hurt the most, most especially from unfair citations? That's concerning to me. And so, again, I appreciate that there are, we can argue that there are some benefits to the cameras, but even when I look at Lake and Harlem, and I get their small data points in terms of accidents, we only have three years in terms of accidents at Lake and Harlem provided. North and Harlem, we were able to go back to 2015, but I only see three years that we were given. And really, in terms of, and again, because the number's so small, I get you can't really establish an exact trend, but at North and Harlem, you're looking at numbers that kinda hover up and down around 17, 18, 22 accidents at North and Harlem. At Lake and Harlem, even though small, albeit small, we actually have an uptick trend, whereas in 2018, there were four, in 19, there's five, and in 2020, there's six. And so, my further question on top of these accidents would be, how many of these accidents would have received a red light citation, meaning preventing, you know, was this the type of thing that was potentially being prevented? Or were these accidents something that happened in the middle of a green light? So, the red light camera wouldn't have prevented those anyhow, and not having that data or that information seems relevant to me. I mean, even when you look at the number of citations per year, and you're looking at all lanes, right lane, right turn lane, to me, the most alarming and the most concerning to a certain extent could be the folks that blow through the red light, right? And perhaps T-bone another car? And is that something, you know, and that, again, these accidents that have occurred, under what conditions did they occur? Was it with a red light or not, would be a question. Another data point I would actually like to see in a program like this would be, what are we looking at in terms of repeat offenders, right? In terms of the same people doing the same thing? How often do we see that happening? And so, I get that there are some things that are perhaps from a safety perspective, but there are some questions with our accident data here. I get that there's some value in terms of a revenue source, right? But again, do we want to look at not knowing who makes up providing that revenue source? Residents, non-residents, does that matter? Do we care? Is that a conversation we even wanna have? I don't know, but we haven't discussed it, right? And so-
Patty, Patty, if I could. It doesn't matter whether it's a resident or a non-resident. It's someone who's breaking the law, okay? And so, it doesn't matter what the data point is of, there's no reason to analyze whether it's a resident or a non-resident, okay? If you ride through, if you go through the red light, you break the law, you get a ticket. So, I don't understand where your data points are coming from.
Well, my data point-
Excuse me, let me finish. The alternative to this is, we take a police officer, who we've already discussed this evening about the importance of having police officers doing police work, and have them become meter maids and monitor our intersection. So, I don't understand where the data is coming from. It seems pretty clear to me that this is, we have, we have a problem. We have people who run red lights, okay? Relatively speaking to the total amount of traffic that's out there, as Eric so eloquently explained, it's a very low number. So, I don't understand what data points are gonna get you. And I don't know that we should discriminate against residents versus non-residents in assessing whether or not we have a red light camera. I don't understand where you're going.
That's actually not the point that I'm making, and I-
Sure, sounds like it.
Okay, well, that's, I guess, how you take it, but that's not what I'm saying. And I guess for you, I wasn't clear enough in my explanations for the other data points that I'm asking, but the, I hear what you're saying, that perhaps there are people who are blowing through and deserve the ticket, right? My concern are the 200-plus folks who get the tickets who didn't deserve the ticket. I hear from a number of residents, quite often, folks who are frustrated that they had to go in and contest a ticket that they didn't believe they should have fairly have gotten. That's a data point that concerns me as a trustee. I'm listening to the residents' concerns around this. So, to me, it's a very valid and important data point, and having the information about the types of accidents that we've had at both of these intersections, and whether or not these red light cameras help prevent that or not, are valid, important data points that I would like to see.
Trustee Hennick. And maybe, maybe, not to jump in here, but a couple, a couple items. Greg, because I'm de facto running the meeting now, Greg, maybe you can, why don't you jump in first?
Sure. So, a couple of things, trustee Hennick. Number one is that the village allows for contests by mail. All red light programs, camera programs I'm aware of in Illinois do. I've both appeared and prosecuted these violations at your village hall, and I've received them from other municipalities, the violations, and contested them by mail. So, no one has to come into contest. You send in a letter, you explain it, and then your administrative law judge, who is an independent contractor of the village, who's independent from the village, makes decisions on all these cases. So, all the contested cases are decided by an attorney who happens to be a retired judge, Perry Goldbranson's his name, here at village hall, makes those decisions. In order for someone to get a ticket, the company first reviews it to determine if it's plausibly a violation of the law. Then it's forwarded to the village, where a sworn police officer, that's one of the requirements under the state law and your ordinance, then reviews it to determine if the video plausibly shows a violation. If so, then the ticket is issued. Once the ticket is issued, you have the right to a hearing before that hearing officer at village hall, if he believes that a violation has been, has occurred as a third step in this process, then the finding of liability is upheld. So, I just wanted to make clear that there are at least three levels of review before someone is found liable here, and there's that remote contest option.
Well, and the other thing too-
Greg?
All right, hang on a second. I'm, yeah. I know you're, you're technically all my bosses, but I'm gonna try to keep this reined in here just a little bit. The one point I wanted to make too, was trustee Hennick, you mentioned about citations contested. So, in the chart that we sent along, for example, in, let's use 2019 as a full year, it was 286 that were dismissed versus 1207. So, it wasn't, I think you had mentioned 70% or something along those lines. It just, I wanted to clarify that that wasn't as, wasn't as high.
No, and I actually, I did say that, acknowledge that. I said that in 2020, based on the two figures, it was 70%, but that in other years, there was, it was a smaller percentage, but then I was saying that it was still over 200 people that needed to address a ticket that they received. And so, Greg, I mean, I hear what you're saying in terms of the remote, and on one hand, again, I can appreciate that, but I had a personal experience in Indianapolis when I was visiting my son, and I paid a parking meter. My mom and my son and I went out to dinner, and we specifically fed a meter to cover the time. We come back, and I have a ticket on my windshield now. And I, I was like, there's no way this could possibly be my ticket. And I look on my parking meter, and sure enough, I still had time, right? So, I took a picture of it to verify that. And on further inspection of this ticket, it turns out whoever wrote it used the wrong parking space number, but my license plate. So, now this ticket is tied to me, but it was for the person who was parked in a different stall. And so, unfortunately, in Indianapolis, they have a totally different procedure in terms of contesting these tickets. I was supposed to send pictures and write a letter and do all this work and take, out of all my time, you know, I mean, even five minutes for somebody who unfairly gets a ticket, to me, is not fair. And so, I would have had to jump through all these hoops, only to prove that somebody else made a mistake, and I shouldn't have been given this ticket. That's the concern that I have with seeing more than 200 tickets that get dismissed.
Trustee Hennick, I'm David Mast with Vera Mobility, and I wanna be very clear, I don't understand the rules of River Forest, so if it's inappropriate for me to speak, please let me know, and I'll wait until somebody wants to direct a question to me. But if it is appropriate for me to speak, then, then I'd like to make a couple of comments.
David, why don't we hold, why don't we hold off for the time being until we've, all the trustees have had a chance to have their questions addressed? I appreciate you speaking up. And, you know, the other thing I will point out too, the reviewer does not see the address of the information that comes up. They're just seeing, they're just reviewing the situation on its merits. I wouldn't advise that we should be seeing, the reviewer should be seeing where those tickets, I don't, I don't wanna go far, as far to say that's illegal, but it certainly, I think, works in this argument of, they should be looking at them purely from the violation of what they're, you know, the video of what's being recorded at that time. The other thing I would offer too, and I, you know, I will get letters every once in a while from someone who says I shouldn't have, you know, received a red light ticket. The thing anecdotally I will share with you all, is that to this date, I'm still amazed at the amount of people who don't understand that you have to come to a complete stop on a red light before turning red, or before turning right, right? And there are people who think, oh, there were no pedestrians, I can still go. It's not the case. And we see that over and over and over again. And so, people sometimes have this bad taste in their mouth and say, oh, I shouldn't have gotten this ticket from the village, and I got this red light camera violation. There are occasions when people received it because they just didn't understand the rules of the road. So, be that as it may. All right, so trustee Hennick, do you have any, I wanna make, I wanna run through each trustee here to see if anyone has any questions, but I wanna make sure all your questions, at least points, were addressed here before I move on.
Well, I do have more questions, but I know they're not gonna get answered, so I'm gonna let someone else talk.
Okay. So, I'm just gonna go who's on my screen then. So, we'll go with trustee O'Connell. Any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, trustee Cargie?
Don't remember, we advised when the RFP went out, that the Redspeed contract was ending on June 30th?
I believe so, yeah. We had talked about it ending, coming up, and that it was going, we're just gonna let it lapse and then seek a new vendor, that we weren't going to seek any termination to the existing contract.
And the other question, 200 tickets that were dismissed, was that only at the final adjudication phase, or does that include the first two steps that Greg mentioned?
No, that would be the final adjudication phase.
Do you happen to know how many people, roughly, what percentage mail in their challenges and how many appear in person?
I don't.
I think you would.
If I could speak from experience, having been in the room while these tickets are being adjudicated, if someone shows up with five tickets, the judge sometimes will say, I'll dismiss two or three, let's say, of them, in exchange for you agreeing to pay on the others. So, these numbers of tickets dismissed doesn't mean that a violation wasn't established or that they had a valid defense, which there's very few, because actually, it's easy to show whether or not someone stopped before the line. The judge will sometimes make decisions based on sympathy or do a package, kind of like a plea deal at a very local level.
Trustee Cargie, anything else? Trustee Vasquez?
Actually, I was gonna ask the question, but Greg Smith just answered the question, I thought. Because I, when I would go into traffic court, I would see some judges do that. They would sort of like use it as a settlement conference to try to get people to pay some of them, if not all of them. Sometimes also, either, and I'm not sure if this happened here, if the police officer wasn't available to talk or answer the question or whatever, they would automatically just dismiss it as well. I mean, I guess I was gonna ask whether, when, when this 286 number, was it really based on that all those individuals were able to show they were innocent, or there were other reasons for it? And it looks like Greg already answered that, so. I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Brennan?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The collections process, recently, I don't know, in the last six or eight months, the Illinois, some Illinois official said she was, we're no longer going to be doing a collections process for the municipalities. So, where does that stand now, and is that gonna be an extra cost for the village if the state's not handling collections?
Yeah, so, you're correct. That was the state comptroller, Suzanne, yeah, Suzanne Mendoza. The village has an intergovernmental agreement with the comptroller's office that allows- The village has an intergovernmental agreement with the comptroller's office that allows for the comptroller to withhold certain revenues, fines, fees that are owed to us. And red light cameras used to be a part of that. So, I believe, right now, it's parking tickets. Rosie, do you know off the top of your head what else?
Just parking tickets.
It's parking tickets. So, the comptroller, under law, is able to withhold any revenue that is owed to an individual through the comptroller's office, through that process. And so, it's, you know, it's an effective program, obviously. So, but the village still has a collection service that it engages with on, you know, fines and fees that are not paid to it. So, these would just go through that process.
Okay. So, we have a process set up for that?
Correct.
Okay. And then, I know that there have been problems with red light camera companies, and a lot of municipalities have canceled their contracts for several reasons. Isn't there, is it, can you update us? There was a, last time you brought this topic up to the village board, there was a pending Illinois state law not allowing non-home rule municipalities to contract for red light cameras. Am I correct about that?
Yeah. Through the years, not just this year, but, yes, you're correct. There had been various bills throughout the years that have either looked at it from just non-home rule, you know, various items to eliminate red light camera programs. There is one also that was floating around that was looking to, you know, provide some sort of other data analytics reform mechanisms to a program. But with the COVID-19, there was a lot of legislation that just kind of got left off to the wayside, and that was, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was in that bucket.
Yes, that's correct. There was one bill that made it out of the House to the Senate on March 4th, and nothing's happened since then.
So, it's not even languishing anymore? It's gone?
It's probably still an active bill within the session. It's just the session's expired, so they would have to take it up at a veto session, right?
That's right. And I believe the next scheduled session's in November for the next.
Yeah, so the General Assembly won't meet again until November.
Got it. Okay. So, the way I've read some of the studies here is that the red light cameras really do provide a safety service for cars that are running red lights. It's less certain whether they're enhancing public safety or creating more accidents for right turns on red. Have you looked at any of those studies? Do you have any, are you relying on information that right turns on red, these cameras are actually providing a safety service and reducing accidents for right turns? I know that it's against the law. I'm talking about just a safety issue.
Yeah. I mean, the idea here is, in any police enforcement, whether through a red light camera, or through an interaction with a police officer, we're, number one, trying to change people's behavior, right? And so, that is foremost the goal here. And so, by changing, and so, how do we do that? How do we compel people? Well, we issue tickets, right? And that, whether that's a parking ticket, a speeding ticket, or a red light camera ticket, the idea by doing that is to remind people that, A, what the law is, and at the same time, provide a safer environment for the community. And so, are you still going to have crashes? Yeah, absolutely. We're going to try to reduce those, certainly, but we'll never be able to eliminate them, just like we'll never be able to eliminate speeding, right? People are always going to speed, and we're going to be out there, you know, reminding them of what the law ultimately is. And again, I think the importance, as I mentioned before, with the, especially the right turn on red up at Lake and Harlem, you know, with the amount of pedestrian traffic that is there, we're not only looking at it from the perspective of vehicle interactions, but vehicle interactions potentially with human beings.
Right. I'm a little concerned about a study from Case Western Reserve in 2018 that apparently showed that cameras cause more rear end collisions when, for the right turn, right turn cameras, not the rolling, not running through a red light, but the right turn.
Yeah, I would have to go ahead and review that study in greater detail. Trustee Brennan.
Yeah, because I understand totally trying to change behavior, and in fact, it has changed my behavior. Not quite enough. I still do get tickets. But I understand that point. And so, if it actually is serving a safety service, I'm behind it. What concerns me is a study like this that says it's actually causing more rear end collisions for the right turns, but it's actually causing, creating a safety benefit for people who are going through red lights.
No, I understood, and there's a lot of organizations lobbying and otherwise that are looking for a means by which to discredit these types of programs, which I understand. There are also programs and research that's been out there, even through the transportation, highway safety groups, that affirms the benefits of the program. So, you know, there's, depending on which study you're looking for, there's probably something that would ultimately support your cause. The other thing I would say anecdotally, too, that has helped the police department is those cameras have also provided, from a lesser extent, but in an important extent, an additional set of eyes for the police department in those particular areas. And I know we have gone back and used that video at times for other matters, in terms of just investigations unrelated to red light cameras. Certainly not the overarching reason to do the program, but an added, an enhanced benefit for the community.
Yeah. Do we have the ability to use the cameras just for going through a red light and not for the right-hand turn? And do we have the ability to adjust the timing of the, you know, yellow on the right-hand turn?
So, I'll take the last question, last question first. That is all handled by the Department of Transportation. Those intersections are both IDOT-controlled.
Okay.
Number one. And then, two, I mean, the person reviewing the ticket ultimately could, it's that person's discretion on whether or not a violation has occurred. So, I don't, I would feel uncomfortable telling an officer who's reviewing that to, in the universe of the laws, if you will, being violated, to only focus on these and ignore those, when their duty is to review all of those, because they are still violating a state law.
Okay. So, if we put the cameras up, it'll cover all the violations?
Correct.
We can't just, we're just going to cover some?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, I think, all right, there was all your questions, Trustee Brennan?
Yeah, one final question. What happens if we don't approve this tonight, and we would have a period of time without the cameras until we resolve it?
Great question. We potentially wouldn't have any violations, or we would go back to the existing vendor and see if they would want to do a one-month extension, but I don't necessarily know that they would want to do that. I think we've gotten to everyone now. Trustee Bachner.
So, I think that you maybe have answered this question, Eric, but in our last contract, we had, we had the same principles that are within this contract. So, there was a review officer reviewing these beforehand, and so, we had a couple of contested tickets. Is that correct?
Yeah. I'm sorry, Trustee Bachner. What was, I missed the first part of that. You were saying what?
Sorry, no. Yeah. So, in our, in our contract with the group that we are using right now, we currently have review officers. That's not a new part to this contract.
Right. So, there's two layers of review. So, the vendor will review it first, under, you know, the strict guidelines of the state law, they believe a violation has occurred. That, those are all then packaged up and sent to a Village River Forest employee, who then reviews those and determines whether or not a violation has occurred. And one of my correspondences to the board, one of the things I shared was that, just anecdotally, through the years, the amount of violations that the village had approved from the vendor was somewhere in the ballpark of about 40 to 50%. The point being, we're not, even of the small percentage that we are approving, they are a smaller subset of ultimately is what is handed off to us, and we review.
Yeah, okay. And then, right to your point around the bundling, and, you know, occasionally having, you know, if you have five tickets and you pay three of them, in your experience, when you're seeing that, are those five tickets all River Forest, or is it like one in Wood Park, one in Chicago, one River Forest?
Sure. So, each municipality runs its own administrative adjudication system. So, a couple of times I've appeared for your administrative adjudication call, where I've also seen the red light camera tickets, it's only for River Forest tickets, where the judge is reviewing those. The judge here at your village hall doesn't consider the Chicago tickets that driver may also have.
Okay. Thanks. I just need confirmation of that. Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. And certainly, the one comment you made, Trustee Henick, as well, was in terms of the timing of the adjudication, certainly, that's something we could always go back. We've, ours are currently, things start at nine o'clock in the morning. Certainly, that's conducive for, you know, staff, things of that nature. It's something we could always go back and take a look at as well, as we, you know, look to reset the program. Okay. So, anyone else have a comment or question? All right. Seeing none. There is a motion and a second on the floor to approve the contract. Any other discussion?
Can we clear Mr. Mast's speak at least? He's been kind enough to sit around this meeting for three hours. So, can he, opportunity to say something?
What did he say?
He asked if Mr. Mast would just say.
Before we go to a vote.
Okay. Sir, sure. Mr. Mast, you have your opportunity to address the board.
Well, I appreciate it very much. Let me say this first and foremost. Having nothing to do with photo enforcement, it was a pleasure to sit here tonight and watch history being made. And Maywood is our client, and I have been their account manager for eight years. We have seven other clients in sort of the immediate area of you. And in addition to that, we have the City of Chicago Speed Program, which they just renewed for two years early. So, tonight, this important moment, we are the least important moment in the whole thing. And I want to be very clear about that. The one thing I do want to say about our cameras is, I called Chief Tally in Maywood, and I said, would you be willing to serve as a reference for this RFP? And Chief Tally immediately said, absolutely. So, if any of you reach out to Chief Tally, and I hope you do, you will find the type of vendor we are, because I know it was brought up, that there are vendors that have tainted the market for all of us. The one thing that I can say is, you've not seen American Traffic Solutions, which we were previously, or Veramobility, which we are now, in the news. We do it straight. In fact, we price differently than our competitors in the market, because we read the law to be that it should be fixed fee and not based on per paid. And so, we price it at fixed fee, because we believe that's the most ethical way to do it. So, when you talk about recidivism rates, in the Illinois region, in the totality of our clients, the recidivism rate runs between 89 and 92%, meaning that 89 is 92% of the people that get a ticket on one of our systems in a municipality do not get another one. So, that behavior change that many of you have talked about, that you were seeking, is exactly what these systems do. And, Trustee Henick, I don't have the data that you were looking at, but we are a data-driven company as well. And the one question I would have is the total number issued, paid, versus the number challenged. And then, I'd also like to point out that this is the process, the due process, that is available to everyone who receives a violation in a community. And so, when you look at that percentage, if it ends up to be 1% or whatever the number is, because numbers are numbers, just remember that, compare that against who challenges a traffic ticket in Indiana, because they make it harder, who challenges a speeding violation issued by an officer, and see how those numbers compare, because those are important data points as well. So, if we fall above that, we need to have a discussion. If we fall below that, it needs to be recognized that we fall below it. The other thing that I think is most important in this window, and then I'll stop, is those cameras don't care what color the driver is. There is no distinction. It is merely, did a violation occur? And if so, did it meet the business rules? And if it didn't meet the business rules, it doesn't get issued. And if it does meet the business rules, it gets sent on to you all and your law enforcement to make a decision on whether that violation occurred. And in this, because of the technology, the major difference between a officer-issued citation and this system is, you have 12 seconds. Everybody who gets one has 12 seconds of video to review and make a decision on whether they want to challenge it or not. And the other process, it is a he said, she said. That technology provides a better evidence package than an officer-involved event. And so, there are many safety measures that take place. And when you, I do have to address one other thing. Case Western, we hear that often. And Case Western is a phenomenal university with a tremendous reputation. But I will tell you that rear ends do go up, and I would submit that much of it is related to this device more so than our device. And also, we are trying to stop the T-bones. Rear ends don't typically kill anybody. T-bones kill people. So, as you look at that study, please keep in mind, potentially even your own personal behavior on your phone, and wonder if you've put yourself at risk or somebody else at risk, because this device has changed everybody's behavior. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, first and foremost, I appreciate being able to participate in this historic night for you all and for Maywood.
All right. Thank you, David. All right. I don't see anyone else raising their hand. So, with that, we've got a motion, a second, and our fill-in clerk will call the vote.
Okay. Trustee O'Connell. Bob, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Can you say that again?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Bachner.
Yes.
Trustee Carji.
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yes.
Trustee Brennan.
Yes.
Trustee Henick. Oh, Patty, there you go.
I actually beat it myself instead of the opposite. Based on the fact that I don't feel comfortable by not having the information that I would have liked to have been able to evaluate and ask for, and even made the suggestion that we prolong this vote, I'm going to vote no. I'm not comfortable going into a five-year contract without being able to point to having that information. So, I'm a no.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. And then, I will hand it back over to the village president. And then I will hand it back over to the village president.
Okay, we have one last item on the agenda and it's regarding our slated meeting. So, correct me if I'm wrong, Phase Four, and I don't believe the governor has issued another declaration of emergency as of today. And that's what's going to cause us to come back under the Open Meetings Act. Now, what Dan said is absolutely true. We can, as a group, agree that allow our residents to, to call in and we can have a Zoom, we certainly can do it, but us elected officials would need to come into the village hall.
Yep.
And Kathy, with that, a question, would that also then require us to continue with the face masks or social distancing or?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll set up the table such as that it will create a six feet distance in your masks, unfortunately.
We're going to, bring a mask, we're going to try, but to get.
I don't know if I could do it for five hours, but I'm going to try.
It's quite, it's quite comfortable.
Are we, are we offering ourselves the option as trustees to either participate in person or continue to participate via Zoom?
I'm going to give this to, I really, it's a real legal question, I mean.
So the Open Meetings Act was amended to allow for ongoing virtual attendance only if the governor has declared a state of emergency, as President Ducey just mentioned. So the governor's last declaration or proclamation of the state of emergency was May 29th. We're still within the 30-day period. If the governor does not renew it, then you have to be physically present unless you're absent for the typical remote participation reasons, which is individual illness or personal business, or, you know, business-related travel, basically.
Yeah.
Right.
A limited number of attendees? I don't, I don't have read the, what phase four is.
Yeah, it's 50.
Well, Phase Four allows up to 50 people in a room.
Or, or I think.
So you maximize it from 10 to 50. But still, there's social distancing and the mask, so.
So we wouldn't, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, Russ.
No, I was going to say there's social distancing and the mask. So even if in our room, we wouldn't be able to, if we comply with, with particularly the social distancing, we wouldn't be able to fit the 50 people in there. And therefore, I think it would be a good idea to allow for the virtual, in this case, Zoom, so that people can still hook up for that reason.
I think there may be a limit on the occupancy, so it's not always a straight 50%. Sometimes it's 50% capacity. Capacity in this room, 72 people, so I think we'd cap at 36. But we'll take a look at the DCEO guidelines on meetings and make sure we're compliant with that. But I've already scheduled the July DRB meeting and that has a remote participation option built in as well for the public.
Another thing, Eric, is I wonder if the face masks are that uncomfortable, what a face shield might be, if that's an option? And if that is, if that works as well as a face mask? Also, if it works as well with the microphone, I'm not sure. But that might be an option as well.
Especially for people who wear glasses, sometimes the masks are difficult. I can't use a mask, so. I think they're, I mean, are they recommending both or either or, like six feet distance? It's a mask if you can't maintain social distance. Right. So if we can maintain social distancing of six feet, then we can go without. I don't know. You, you've chosen.
I always err on the side that I'm not going to be able to maintain that social distance and.
I understand.
Well, what I hear regarding the mask versus the shield, the mask is better than the shield. But, but if you can't, if people have issues with the mask, then the shield is better than nothing, so to speak.
Okay. So unless the governor does something in the next week, we'll, we have to plan to come in. And our next board meeting, remind me, Eric, is going to be July, what?
13th.
13th. July 13th.
And then the plan would be to go to a one-meeting schedule for July and August?
To, for the summer meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that's all we have, so I will ask for.
Can I circle back to, can I, sorry, can I circle back to the point I made about public comments? Can I ask for that to be a discussion item on our July 13th meeting?
Sure.
To clarify what parameters and making sure that we have public comments clear for people, especially in light of that, what we're saying about folks not being able to attend in person, just so people are clear.
Yeah, no problem. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Okay. Trustee Bachner. Trustee Kargi.
Yeah.
Trustee Vasquez.
Yeah.
Trustee Brennan.
Yeah.
Trustee Hennig.
Yeah.
Trustee O'Connell.
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned.
All right. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.